Hello and welcome. My name is David Kryl. I'm one of the directors of the Institute of Advanced Research in Artificial Intelligence in Vienna. And it's my great pleasure to be your host today for the second special session on the traffic forecast competition at NURIPS. It's a great honor to have Rason Pascano with us. He will kick off this session with an amazing keynote. Rason is a renowned machine learning researcher who is well known for his substantial contributions to deep learning and reinforcement learning, both theoretical and to the widely used Tiana library. He studied in Germany and Canada, where he worked with Joshua Benjio. His research interests span a wide range of fields, including memory and recurrent networks via theoretical aspects of deep networks to improving data efficiency and learning. In this context, the question arises, how to deal with changing conditions or new tasks? A challenge he will discuss in his keynote now. I'm really looking forward to your talk. The floor is yours. Tell us how neural networks struggle to transfer.
Thank you. Let me share my screen. Okay. Hopefully, everyone can see. Thank you so much for inviting me to give this talk and for the very kind presentation. Yeah, I'll just jump directly into it. So I just wanted to start with like a high level disclaimer. So there's going to be, you know, the end of the talk, there's going to be ample time for questions. I'm expecting this talk not to to cover more than forty, forty five minutes. But if somehow I don't manage to get to your question, yeah, feel free to ping me afterwards. And the other thing is my goal here is to try to stimulate discussion. So I'm gonna sort of, sometimes I'm gonna skip over the once or over certain details that I'm presenting my results, so please take this with with a pinch of salt. And, you know, if anything is very interesting to you, please do look into all the related literature to get an actual complete overview of where the field is on that particular topic. Okay, so I wanted to start with a high level motivation. So we definitely are at the point where neural networks can do a lot of interesting tasks when we have enough data and where the setting is stationary. So I wanted to give an example that is maybe related slightly to the to the topic of the challenge. So this is an agent that learns how to navigate. This is a recent paper from DeepMind. So what happens here is you have an environment that's like a street view style environment. So you see, you know, the realistic images and you get a series of instructions of where you're supposed to drive. And the agent is able to learn to do this quite well, given that the map is fixed and the type of instructions are like the, you know, the, the, the conditions of the problem are static. And this is by no means the most impressive example, right? Like, everybody knows about GPT three, you know, we have AlphaGo, AlphaStar, AlphaFold and many, many other examples where where neural networks are able to do very impressive stuff. But in all of these things, the setting is stationary. And the question is whether this is enough. And to try to motivate that is not enough. Maybe I don't even need to do that, but to motivate that. This I have a map and this shows the average traffic over UK on different months. And what you can see here is that it changes over time, right? The traffic changes from one month to another. So you can't possibly train on a few months and then predict how traffic would be in the other months because of the statistics change. You could try to make this problem static by saying, I'm going to collect data over, you know, the entire year, shuffle it, make it ID, and then I'm not going to have this problem. But then you'd have the traffic changing from one year to another for various reasons. The, the price of gas changes, the number of cars that people have changes over time. And all of this will induce a change in the data distribution and will make the, the system that is learning to fail. So this is, this is a sort of a fundamental problem when you're trying to build up systems that you'd want to deploy in the real world, which is non-stationary and keep changing all the time. And that's not the settings in which the tools that we have right now are best equipped to deal with. So one could ask, how can you deal with this? Sort of what are the different ways to thinking about the problem? And, and in my mind, you know, there's two ways you can approach thinking about this. So one is thinking through or referring to it as generalization. And I've seen a recent, you know, more and more papers recently that start talking about like out of distribution, generalization, or, or things like this, or strong generalization, or extrapolation, or these are different vague terms that are referring to the same conceptual idea, which is what you could try to, to, to do is to try to train a system in such a way that while it's trained on, on a certain distribution, on the training distribution, it still works on the test distribution, even that the, even though there is a sufficient shift in that distributions. And one way to approach this is by adding invariances within the architecture itself. And I just wanted to give, I mean, this is not a new idea by any means. I wanted to give two classical examples. So one is convolutional neural networks. I think everyone, when they, they first learn about convolutional neural networks, the first thing that they learn about them is that they're invariant to translation because you have this function that you apply at different position on the image. So, you know, the entire convolutional neural net should be able to be invariant to small translations in your image. And another example, more sort of slightly up, more up to date example is graph neural networks, which are supposed to be invariant over the graph structure. And the reason for this is because the way graph neural networks work is you have this MLPs or dysfunctions that you apply either at the edge level or at the node level. So because of that, if you change the number of nodes in the graph or the number of edges, the, the, the trained models should be invariant to that because their inputs shouldn't technically change. They are still applied independently to each edge and each node in the graph. And as an example, this is actually really old papers. So this is interaction neural nets. It was my first contact with this world of, of graph neural networks. And we have here like a graph neural network that is trained to simulate a physical system. In this particular case, bouncing balls. And you train the system on, on six bouncing balls and it generalizes straight up to, to, to nine bouncing balls. I have to add that, you know, with graph neural networks, things are not as trivial, trivial as I make them sound. So they're actually not right out invariant to the, to the size of the graph and to the topology of the graph. And that is because, you know, depending on the number of incoming edges into a node or things like this, actually, the input distribution of the node can change if the number of incoming edge changes because of how dysfunctions are typically used. So, but, but the generic idea is, you know, if you make a model that is just has a partial view of the data, it just looks at the transformation of the data. And, you know, if, if the way you do this is by ignoring the parts that are going to change between the training and the test distribution, then you've been, basically you've built in the architecture itself form of invariance that you can exploit when you have this non-stationary setting. So this is, so just a high level idea, one way to think about the problem. And I wanted to highlight another, I mean, this is sort of related to, to the previous work, but I wanted to highlight another paper that kind of exploits this same idea. And it talks about sort of generalization to new distributions. So what you do here is you have again, an agent that is supposed to navigate in the street view like environment. And you're supposed to give the agent a location where it has to go. And that, that is given as an X and Y position, latitude and longitude. And what they do in the paper is, you know, they consider this like black squares and these are the held out tests. So the agent never sees those combinations of X and Y. But because the, the training set is composed in such a way that you can actually get to see the full X range and the full Y range. And the way this X and Y's are used within the model happens to be in a way that they don't get too entangled. Then the system will now generalize to new pairs of X and Y's because it, you know, it understands independently all possible values of X and it understands independently all values of Y's. So now you can come up with new compositions of X and Y. And this is in, in the, in the same spirit of the things I was saying before. And it is one way you can think about generalizing to new things. The, I wanted to highlight, you know, a different side of the same, of the same thinking, which is instead of trying to build this up in the architecture itself, you can try to augment your data with, with, you know, all kinds of transformations that you want to become invariant to. And again, you know, this, there's lots of works in this space. I'm just sort of randomly picking two papers that come to mind when, when I was thinking about this. So one is domain randomization. So this is an OPNAI paper, you know, this is, you want to get your system to be invariant to the color and maybe texture of the objects that you're dealing with. So what you're doing is at training time, you're generating all these variants of, of your data points with like different colors and different textures. And what this does is it weakens the correlation between the color and the texture of the object and the actions that you're supposed to do. And your nets are notorious to latching to the strongest correlations in, in the data that they see. So because you've weakened this correlation, or you maybe even destroyed it completely, you get a system that is mostly invariant to this. So this is domain randomization. I was wanting to give, so there's a huge field about domain adaptation, right? And I wanted to give like one example, a random example from there. So it's like adversarial domain adaptation, where what you do is you assume you have access to at least the observation from, from the, from the training distribution and the test distribution that you want to generalize to. And then what you're trying to do is you're trying to learn a representation from which you can distinguish the two, the two distributions. So you basically want to, if you feed in an image, you, you want to have a representation from which you cannot classify or detect from which, from where it came. And, and this again means that, that, that internal representation will be invariant to the change in the distributions. So one thing that, that is true about sort of what I've said so far, it basically makes the assumption that we know how the data is going to change, right? So in, in all of these scenarios, whether you're like building it up in the architecture, you know, you're like analyzing the, the math behind the, this change that you want to be invariant to, or you're building up your data set to, you know, to, to, by augmenting it and adding examples that will force you to be invariant to these changes. You're making the assumption that you have some knowledge about how the data will change. Another way to think about it is maybe you're willing to sacrifice to a certain extent you, how, how, how things will happen when you move to the new distribution. So you don't care about zero shot performance, or you don't care about, as soon as I get to the new task, I should perform well on it. You know, as soon as I get to the new task, data distribution, I should perform well on it. But rather you care about being able to learn faster and faster on any new data distribution. So, and this is, I guess, what I was supposed to talk about. So this is the transfer learning aspect of it. And giving here an example, you'd want something like, okay, I have an agent that says it's learning breakout. And then after that, I'm going to see space invaders and I want to transfer from what I learned in breakout. So what that means is that as soon as I start training on space invaders, I will converge much faster because I can build on the knowledge that I've already had. And there are certain things that I don't need to learn anymore. For example, Gabor filters in order to analyze the, the visual stream. But when you try to, to build this kind of scenarios, when you're moving from one distribution to another, and if we're thinking about sort of the non-stationarity of, of sort of, you know, the, the traffic, the image that I had with the traffic of a UK, you know, this will continuously change. So this is not going from A to B. This would be like going from A to B to C to D and so forth, because every so often the distribution of the traffic will change. And when you have a sequence like this, the first thing that, you know, you would normally notice, or the first thing that people usually notice is as you see, as you observe new and new data distributions, as you switch to new distributions, you start losing performance on the original data that you've learned. And this is coined as catastrophic forgetting is something that's been known for a really long time. So if I have a model, a neural net that is training on task A, and then I train it on task B, then I observe that my performance on task A will degrade. And there are potentially two reasons why people, when they're thinking about transfer in a, you know, continuously changing environment or in a sequential learning setting, they usually get stuck on catastrophic forgetting. And the reasons are, A, it, it is most likely, as you, as you go through, like that, there is some periodicity to this non-stationarity that you're observing. So, you know, even though from year to year, the traffic changes, there is a lot of similarity of traffic in the same month, right? So as, as you go through time, you come back to a month you've seen in the past, this, this distribution would not be that extremely different. So you do want to remember, right? So, so there is this implicit assumption that you are going to revisit distributions that are similar to the ones that you've seen. And from that perspective, the fact that you're losing that performance that you have catastrophic forgetting seems quite problematic. Here it doesn't, maybe I just wanted to make a slide note. Here it might not look that catastrophic, but this is Bermuda Amnest where it is, it is quite catastrophic. I mean, this might seem like a small jump, but it's actually quite, quite bad for, for an easy task as Amnest. If you, if you have any more meaningful tasks, you'd see that you basically lose all performance. The second reason why people worry about this is because assume you have a task, you have three tasks, like in this case, and, and there's some affinity between A and C. So task A should help you to learn task C. If you have a task B in the middle that you have to go through, that will destroy all your knowledge about task A, then when you get to C, there's nothing for you to transfer from, right? So there is this implicit assumption that you need to collect the knowledge of all the tasks that you've seen so far, because you don't know which of that, of those tasks will be useful for the next task you'll see. And you just want to have all of them and be able to transfer for all of them. So, yeah, just sort of at a high level. I mean, this is sort of a topic that I've been spending quite a lot of time on. So this would be, I mean, at least sort of the way I think of it, I usually refer to it as continual learning. There are different, you know, there, there are different things like lifelong learning and so forth, that are actually quite related to continual learning. There are small differences between this, but in large, you can think that this is just a big community that is working on the same problem. And in continual learning, what you care about is being able to go to, to learn on non-stationary data. Usually this non-stationarity is made to be piecewise stationary, just because it makes things easier to quantify, to measure and to, to deal with. But in principle, we care about non-stationarity in any form it might come. So, so you have a sequence of tasks that you go through. And what you would like is to have a system that is learning in this setting and that it has certain properties. You know, there's a list of the Zerata that we're expecting. And among that list is this idea of dealing with catastrophic forgetting. So being able to learn one thing after the other without forgetting. But there's also other things, like, you know, putting a bound on the amount of compute you're allowed to have at any point in time. And, you know, maybe the, the, the thing we care most about here is that you'd want to transfer. You would want to learn faster and faster as you go through the tasks. You want to build on things that you've learned so far. And again, sort of, I, I think I've mentioned this before, but the community as a whole has been focusing a lot on the do not forget, on the catastrophic forgetting side. Though I think that a transfer bit is probably the reason we started studying this. And is the, it is exactly what, where we want to get. And to, I, I think, again, an implicit assumption that has been made often in the past is that we can address this different Zerata separately and maybe at some point kind of compose, learn from the answers that we get for each of them and then come up with a solution that reflects all of them. I'm personally more and more convinced that this is impossible. There's like implicit trade offs that you have to do between these different things. And we can't really target them separately. We need to target them all at once. But at least we should, and, and I'm, I'm thinking that's where this community is moving towards. We should at least target the catastrophic forgetting and the transfer learning simultaneously. I think that's sort of the minimum. There's some other aspects that I think are also important, but yeah, I think that's sort of the direction that we should go. And I wanted to, to highlight sort of in this kind of space. If, if you look at this, of, of this field and you're trying to like cherry pick the things that are focusing a little bit more on transfer learning, like one thing that comes up is, is models that are sort of in this family, like progressive networks. So this is one of the early works, but there's a lot of follow up work on this space, things like Pacnets and so forth. And what you do here in this setting, it's, it's sort of very, it's something very naive. What you do is whenever you learn a task, you freeze that, that model that you've learned and you generate, you, you start with a new model that is learning the new task, but it has the option to read out from the features of the, of the first model that learned the first task. So basically you're dealing with catastrophic forgetting by making a copy. So you froze the model that you've trained, you made a copy, so there's no interference, there's nothing that you're destroying. And now you have the opportunity to read out all the activations. So look at all the features that you've figured out when you learn the first task. And, and I think, you know, approaches like this are, you know, taking them as sort of continual learning. They're quite popular in the transfer learning literature as well. But what I wanted to highlight, which I find is actually quite interesting, is if you look at a sequence of hard tasks, in this particular case, things like Atari, what you see is that you still get negative transfer and it's not always obvious why and when. So here, green is supposed to be positive, blue is supposed to be negative. You can imagine as with any paper, you know, there's been a particular amount of tweaking and, and, and trying to get the best results possible. And you still have, even with the progressive net, you still have some blue in there. And the same holds if you do simpler things like just fine tuning the model, like if you don't care about catastrophic forgetting, which I think you should, but if you don't care about that, then you just assume that you just care going from A to B and you fine tune. This is among the, the four baselines. You see plenty of, of negative transfer in this, in this, in this setting as well. And this is just sort of highlighting that, that, that transfer is hard. Another, when we're thinking about transfer, like we're thinking about fine tuning the model, so sharing parameters that I just said before, that it doesn't always work on, you know, reading out activations. So that's sort of what progressive nets do. Another thing you can think of is, is desolation. This is the work from Hinton and all. And the idea here is what you care about is to work in the functional space. So you don't care about staying close to the parameters of the previous learned solution because we know that there are many parameterization that give rise to the exactly the same function. So you might be too restrictive if you do that. So instead you want to stay close in functional space and, you know, to measure this. If it happens that your functions are distributions and in machine learning, we can always force our models to look like distributions, then you can measure the distance between dysfunctions as a, as a, for example, using KIL. And, and sort of, in my mind, this is what desolation is about, is measuring the distance between the functions and, and trying to minimize the distance. And you add this KIL term, which comes, becomes your usual desolation loss. So, I mean, I, I just sort of wanted to, I don't necessarily, I, you know, I don't like to put too many results on the, on the, on the slides because they usually are exactly what you'd expect them to be. But wanted to highlight that desolation is not a silver bullet either. And, you know, just as a, to, to, to take that message home, you know, there is a paper that is focusing on how to improve transfer beyond desolation and sort of this is the digital work. So here, where we started from is realizing that if you say you have four tasks and I want to transfer between them, if I take task one, pi one and pi four, and I, I put the KIL between them, that's not going to work very well. Because again, the same reason that before, you are going to have this negative interference between tasks. So trying to stay close to pi one would prevent you from learning pi four. So you'll see negative transfer rather than positive transfer. So the idea in this, in this work was trying to make this thing a bit more indirect. So what we do is we introduce this pi zero in the middle. And pi zero is just becoming a centroid of all the tasks that you're learning, right? Because everyone is stealing in pi zero, so pi zero, it needs to learn sort of in expectation like an average behavior, which is not going to be useful to solve any of the tasks. But the idea is that now this pi zero could be thought of as a priori, could be thought of as what you want to stay close to in order to learn faster. So we have this kind of weird trust region kind of behavior where you have pi zero that is learning to be the centroid of everything that, that you're, you're learning. And then everything needs to stay close to the centroid. And, and now all the tasks are moving together and you have sort of this very indirect path of transfer that goes, you know, from pi one to pi zero and then from pi zero to pi four. And in this paper, we show how for certain distributions where, you know, the typical things don't work as well, like where if you do multitask learning, or if you use just KIL or things like this, you'd get interference and you'd get slower learning. If you add this indirection, things help. But of course, the, the issue or like one other issue of this is, first of all, it works, but it doesn't always work. But the other thing is also because of the indirection, the transfer is weaker. So if you have a set of tasks that would naturally transfer to each other, then doing this would be much slower than just doing multitasking, sharing parameters or any of the other techniques. And I think the sort of, this is another aspect when you're talking about transfer and talking about tasks. And it is to a big, to a, to a large, in large and unsolved problem that, that it would be useful to figure out for both continual learning, meta learning and many other things is when you have two tasks, can you know whether those two, the task A would transfer to task B or not? And that's a really hard problem because maybe unsurprisingly, what is semantically, semantically meaningful is to task seem similar to us as humans, that doesn't mean that they would lead to, to forward transfer if you just fine tune from one to another. Sometimes arbitrarily, so if we go back to the progressive nets, the thing about the progressive nets where we're playing with all of the Atari games, sometimes some of the games that didn't look anything like each other that looked completely different, you know, they would naturally provide for transfer. And some tasks that felt very similar to us conceptually in terms of what you need to do in the game, like what actions you're supposed to use and so forth, they would lead to negative transfer. And that's just because the way neural nets represent knowledge and the, the way they operate is, is very different from how we do that. So semantic similarity is not as strongly correlated with the signal that we care about and understanding distilling that signal by, from tasks and understanding which task will help you to transfer and which task will lead to interference. It's still, I think, not that well understood. Another, I guess, again, I was, hopefully this was still, I mean, this is slightly at a high level, the whole talk. But another sort of way of thinking about the problem is, is sort of moving into the meta learning literature. And, and there, the, the big picture is assuming you want to, you have a bunch of tasks that you want to learn and assuming you have some common meta parameter eta here that is shared between all of these tasks. What you really want to do is you want, maybe not necessarily using gradients, but you want somehow to back propagate information to figure out what is this, what this eta parameter should be in order for you to learn as fast as you can. And, and you can think of this as, you know, it is still related to transfer. But instead of thinking of the, of the simple scenario of going from A to B, you're actually allowing yourself to have a distributions of tasks. And you, you're trying to discover that common properties of those, of the distribution of tasks. So is it when you get a new task from the distribution, you'd be able to learn it very fast so that you transfer to new instances of tasks from that distribution? And there is a large family of works here. I just put two, two approaches. I mean, this is, this is a really huge field and I'm not trying to claim that this will cover all different methods. Actually, there is a continuum between many of these things. And there's a continuum between task inference based approaches and gradient based approaches. And we have memory based approaches and so forth. But I just wanted to highlight maybe what I think are some limitation of, of, of this particular direction that, that we need in order to, to say that this can give you realistic tools to use when you want to deal with non-stationary data. So one particular issue, so one particular family of approaches is sort of focusing on, on task inference. So here the assumption is that they're, you know, during the training time, you've seen all the kinds of behaviors that you might care about. And then the test time is just about figuring out which of those behaviors you're supposed to employ. Usually there, there are some advantages with task inference in terms of how quickly you get to solve a new task. And, and sort of the kind of tricks you can play with this task inference procedure. But the, the big limitation is that it, more often than not, it reduces to one out of K. So it assumes that, you know, there are different K solutions to all the problems that you'll ever see. And it's just identifying K solutions to all the problems that you'll ever see and it's just identifying which of those you're dealing with at the moment. And this doesn't, you know, for the non stationary setting that we're discussing, this is not enough, right? Because the world is evolving and it's not necessarily moving in a in a circle, like it's not just going through like K different ways of behaving. They're like new modes of the data. There's, you know, new behavior that you've never seen before. And you want to be able to adapt to that as well. And task inference methods in general don't have a way of adapting to that. The other, another sort of family of approaches, again, as as I said before, these things are very related and sometimes it's hard to know when you move from one to the other. But if you're thinking about gradient based methods, so this is the, you know, this have this usual formulation of an inner loop and an outer loop. Here, what you're doing is in the inner loop, which is what you're going to do at test time as well, you're running a proper optimization algorithm most of the time. So you're you're you know, running S G D or something like this. And because of this, you have the freedom of saying if that if I get a task that is different from everything that I've seen so far, since I'm doing S G D, I will be able to solve it. However, you know, my my experience with with all of these things is that that might be true, but you would most likely end up learning it much slower than if you didn't have the the whole meta learning pipeline around it and and sort of learning process. And you don't have, but you and you definitely don't have any kind of guarantees that you will learn fast because the you know, the hyperparameters that you're trying to estimate in the outer loop, they are meant for for the task distribution that you're seeing. So that's sort of an issue. And in general, I think when you're thinking about these things like the 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 task distributions that people usually deal with in in their works tends to be quite small. And how do you generalize to a large task distribution? It's it's a bit hard. And the issue with this is we are kind of back to where we were when we were talking about data augmentation and when we're talking about building invariances in the system is it kind of implies that you know beforehand what are this new settings that you'll have to test your system in. So you can plan ahead and you can make your task distribution in such a way that includes them. And and, you know, you can make it rich enough and but that is rarely the case. So that's not necessarily sort of what we are interested in. So in some sense, this is the the limitation of the methods. And I just sort of wanted to do a little bit of summary. So this was supposed to be like providing you very high level ideas of some of the tools that we have to think about transfer. So these are, you know, either in the space of meta learning, there is some in the space of transfer learning or continual learning. There's obviously many other tools that I haven't got a chance to go through. But, you know, all of them do give us some signal in the direction we want to go. They do work to a certain extent. But they all have limitations as sort of anything, any any tool that we have so far. And like in meta learning, it's usually is sort of the importance of the task distribution that you're using it. So you need to know beforehand and you need to put a lot of care in in building up the task distribution in order to get a system that that would would work at test time. And, you know, task inference, which somehow I feel like is becoming more and more popular, has this issue of of limiting you to one out of K behaviors. You have other things like learning to learn and so forth, which can lead to divergence. And yeah, continual learning, I think it might be a good formalism to think about maybe the non stationarity problem and how we want to approach it. It has as a as a as a subfield, as a as a community, it has been focusing a lot on the catastrophic forgetting. But I think it should move from there. And I think if it moves from there, it might become a lot more useful and pragmatic and a lot of more people would be sort of interested in it. And I wanted to talk a little bit. So I mean, there are many reasons why we have these difficulties in 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 transfer, but I wanted to go sort of in the second part of the talk, I wanted to go a little bit more deep into the nitty details. So one thing that I wanted to to talk about is this sort of ray interference paper, which I think it's actually quite quite interesting. So this is some recent work that I've done with with Tom, Diana and Joseph. And it is, it is sort of specific to the, I mean, the work itself is specific to the particular R L setting, but I actually think the observations and the conclusions are more generic than that. So what we wanted to do in this work, we wanted to look at the relationship between the learning signal and the performance of 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 the agent. And we had this kind of pictures in mind and we said like, if if you are in a supervised learning setting, what you would normally expect is to have really strong learning signal initially, because you know, at visualization, because there's a lot for you to learn. And as you get closer convergence, the learning signal will disappear. And that's because, you know, at convergence gradient should be zero. And and the observation, yeah, the observation that we started from is in R L, things are not exactly like that, right? In in R L, you'd expect the learning signal curve versus performance to look more like this inverted U shape where the learning signal will be very weak. And that's because the data that you see depends on the action that you take. So if you don't know how to behave, you are not going to observe any interesting states. You're not going to see any reward. So you don't have what to learn. And, you know, by chance, you somehow get there. So the signal becomes stronger and stronger. And then again, it will become weaker when you converge, because again, you've you're close to the optimal behavior. There's not much for you to learn. And the kind of questions we were asking ourselves is like, you know, one typical thing that we've noticed with with deep nets is they tend to have interference between tasks. So how does this all play out when you when you're trying to learn two tasks and there tends to be some interference between them. So in here, this is a hypothetical, assume you're trying to learn to play Starcraft with Protos versus you're trying to learn to play Starcraft with Zerg. And, you know, this this two these two different tasks that you're learning, there's some interference for them. And the observation that we're making is by chance that the visualization, you'll be slightly better on one task versus the other. And what this means is that, you know, the task that is better because of the interference will push the other one down. And then you get the sort of this kind of effect where basically the the task that is weaker will be pushed down, so it will be even weaker and it will be unable to learn. And what you'll see is that you actually end up learning one of the tasks first and only when you've converged to that task and the learning signal for that task becomes weak again, you can start learning the second. So even though you're trying to do multitask learning, you're showing both tasks at the same time to the agent, you're learning them sequentially. You first learn task one and then you learn task two. And this is some simulation. This is not actually Starcraft. This is a a bandit, contextual bandit problem, just so that we can get lots of data. But yeah, it turns out that you exactly get this behavior when when you're trying to do R L, right? So you you get that you've learned the task sequentially. You don't, you don't learn them simultaneously. And just, so when we're trying to do simulations, we got plots like this. And I guess for Tom, this looked a lot like a ray fish. And that's where the name of the paper comes from. And yeah, I guess the other point I wanted to make is if you look at the learning curve itself, then you'd observe this plateau, right? And the plateaus are always happening once you've learned one of the tasks and then you're stuck in this plateau for a while and you start to learn the next task. And if you add more than two, you'll see multiple plateaus that you go through. And sort of in a large a large level, this is sort of the theme of the paper and the sort of the the bit that we're trying to discuss. And this is sort of the main observation that, you know, even in in multitask learning, when you're presenting multiple things simultaneously, you end up learning them sequentially. And this leads to, this this leads to a loss of efficiency. And I guess the first question that maybe is relevant here, is this something specific to R L? Does this happen in deep learning as well, in like supervised tasks and maybe how to fix it? And I guess the 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 argument I'm trying to make is that this is happening in supervised learning as well. And I I don't necessarily have the data, I don't necessarily have like the full picture right now, but you know, we do observe this kind of plateaus in in deep learning quite often or not. There is even old work, for example, like Andrew Sachs' work on the exact dynamics of deep linear models that are predicting similar kind of plateaus and are predicting similar kind of behavior where you're learning different modes of the data distribution sequentially. I mean, I think, you know, you have that old work that old work was proposing a solution which has has something to do with visualization, but I don't necessarily think you know, that that solution is sort of you know, completely removes this this problem from from the picture. And and then sort of I wanted to continue on this and sort of trying to explain what like basically taking this this image and and push it further and trying to explain what this means in for transfer and what this means for continual learning. And, you know, why are are these things so difficult? So this is a second paper that we had this year. So this is, I was lucky enough to be involved in this. So this is work with Raya, DeShant and Andre. And the work is more like an overview of of the continual learning field, but like the part that I think I'm interested, that I find interesting here is trying to understand learning, you know, gradient based learning for neural nets. And one simple observation, that somehow I, you know, I haven't thought about it before, thinking more carefully about this paper, is if you look at the 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 gradient that you compute over mini batch, you know, in the mini batch, you have a bunch of examples. And if you look for a particular weight, what each of the of the examples, each of the gradient of each of the example are trying to do is are either trying to make that way to be bigger or trying to make that way to be smaller, right? And you can think conceptually of this as some sort of tug of war, where each example is trying to pull up the weight in one direction or another. And the way learning happens is, you know, you find this equilibrium after some time of where you are. And, you know, you can think of this at the example level. So that's sort of where we started off, like thinking of different examples in a mini batch, but this is true, you can you can move at any granularity that you like, you know, the same is true if you think about different modes of the data, if you think about different tasks and so forth. And the, I guess, just moving to the to the to the last slide. The thing about this is the way I I'm thinking about this is that like, okay, so the way learning works in neural networks, the way we do credit assignment and by credit assignment, I mean, the way we assign blame to weights for for the loss that we see is through this tug of war dynamics. And this is sort of why we need the data to be I A D, right? Because in order to learn about different things, they all of them have to be simultaneously present, or at least in expectation be equally present to pull on the rope so that you find the equilibrium. And this is why, you know, like, we can't really deal well with non I A D data. So this is sort of the source of why we need this I A D assumption, why so build within everything that we do when we're doing gradient based learning with with neural nets. And this is also explicitly showing, you know, saying explicitly that there is no knowledge composition, right? So we're not being able to learn about, you know, cats by contrasting it to dogs and saying, oh, cats looks like a dog, but it has certain features differently. That's sort of the learning of the basics at the at the the low level of it, the way it works is by having both cats and dogs present and both pulling on the rope in different directions in order for you to find the the equilibrium. And you can think about catastrophic forgetting as basically just failure in doing credit assignment. So whenever you don't have one mode of the data present at some point in time, you know, the other modes of the data will push the rope all the way and you'll get catastrophic forgetting. So I think, you know, this can, you can, you can now think of continual learning as studying the credit assignment problem in learning. And in particular, sort of the effects of this tug of war. And you can think about what would mean to to find an alternative way of doing credit assignment, something that doesn't involve this. And I think there are two aspects here. So one, it will give you data efficiency. And that is because I think more often than not, when you're doing learning, what happens is we learn about certain examples that might be easier. But we still have to rehearse them all the time. We still have to compute gradients on them because we need them in order to maintain this tension on the different weights, so that we learn the right function at the end. And this is a big source of of data inefficiency. But the second thing is, we might come up with a learning process that doesn't require I A D if we if we fix how we do this credit assignment problem. And and this could have big implications for transfer learning as well. And you know, you could, we might, if we if we are to rethink about how we do credit assignment, like one way to think about it is how to add sort of knowledge composition to be sort of a core component in in sort of this this learning process. And yeah, I guess this is sort of my final thoughts. So that that are sort of, I'm, this is sort of what I'm thinking about lately. It's it's sort of about learning dynamics in neural networks. I'm thinking about why I A D is so important and how can I get rid of it? Thinking about credit assignment and what it means for data efficient learning and and for transfer learning and for continual learning. Yeah, yeah. So I think I think this is sort of the end of my presentation. And let me see if I can open the comments and see if whether people have comments or questions.
Thank you so much for this wonderful and very, very wild and comprehensive tour of of this area. I I found this absolutely amazing. I would like to open the floor to questions. Please do type your questions in the Zoom chat. And for those of you who are joining via YouTube, please ask there in the chat and they will be copied over. In the meantime, maybe I can start off with the question. You you showed us all these complex scenarios with multiple tasks and multiple
Yeah.
types of data and meta learning. And I was just wondering, are there any signs, typical signs that you find when a model is simply approaching or busting its capacity to learn new things rather than just being badly parametrized?
Yeah, so I mean, I think this ambiguity between these two scenarios is hard. We you definitely notice that you know, you can take a simple M L P and you can make some kind of task generator that can be even just like random partitions of the space that you need to learn. And as if you, as you start crunching through them, I guess your your natural expectation is for you to suffer from catastrophic forgetting and always keep track of the last task that you see. But as you go through more and more of them, at some point, you'll see that you stop learning. And that is, I mean, that that like, it depends on how you interpret that. That that can come from you ending up in a space where optimization is hard. It could come out from issues of of like curvature and all of this stuff. It could also potentially come, or another way of thinking about it is running out of capacity, as in somehow your capacity is being used to remember some things of these previous tasks. And I it like, I think it's it's a bit harder for me to say where I cross the line between, is this sort of like a pure optimization problem or is this a capacity kind of issues? But yeah, so I think that the sort of one thing that that one notices is that you do have this kind of effect. Yeah, I mean, I think like a big issue for for this question is we have a very poor understanding of what capacity means for neural networks. And then maybe that's why it's so hard to distinguish between them. So if you look at all the like new all the new works about you know, trying to understand the learning dynamics of these works. And I guess everybody has heard about double descent and all of this stuff. You know, the the overwhelming understanding is the way, the reason we can learn the systems is because they're over parameterized to the task that we that. So what that means is that as you're getting close to, you know, filling up your capacity from the learning process perspective, your system is not going to be over parameterized anymore. So your learning is going to become more and more difficult. So so from that perspective, you probably will hit first this issue of learning becoming really hard before you hit the issue, the more mechanical issue of like, oh, there's no more capacity to to to, you know, snacking some bits of data about what I'm seeing.
Yeah, I guess that that prompted my question that the models are getting, you know, more and more complex. But if you want to reiterate things quite frequently in a in a meta learning approach in order to that for that to finish in a reasonable time, probably you're not going to do this with something like a large transformer model. Well, so then the question is, when the, when does the set of tasks get maybe too complex that it's unfair that you would need a bigger model? Would there be any signs towards that that you have seen? Or is it more artificial distinction that I'm making here? It's just a question of how to optimize, right?
Yeah, I I like, I guess to me, that would be the sign is just like optimization becomes hard, like Adam can't manage anymore, or whatever you're using, R M S proper S G D with momentum, whatnot, is not managing to to get the error done. I mean, there are some other interesting phenomena that might happen before. There was actually a paper in Europe now, but it was, I mean, the archive version of it was published way before. So this was from Ryan Adams, where he trains on half of C far and then fine tunes on full C far. And there, obviously, you don't see any issue in terms of training. You get zero error in both cases, but you see this generalization gap. This kind of makes me think that there is a like, basically very likely there is a phenomenon happening where first you start losing the ability to generalize. And then you start losing the ability to optimize to the extent that you're, depends on how you make the difference between this. So like, you know, some people, yeah, some people don't always make the proper difference between things, but like, I guess you can look to see where the you might still be at a point where optimization is not a problem as in you're always getting your zero training error, but you're as in you're always getting your zero training error, but you'll see the, the validation loss not going as down as you would like or as you'd expect. And to me, that would be a sign that, you know, you're kind of leaving this nice region where things are good. That could be either because your system is not over parameterized enough or you've, yeah, eaten too much capacity.
Okay, very, very, very helpful. And there were two questions from the audience. Tiz Amash writes that he, he was triggered by plateau and sequential learning. And he would like to know if you tried optimizing separated ensembles or stochastic approaches. That's his first question.
Yeah, so we, we didn't, yeah, we, we haven't, we weren't necessarily looking for a way to solve this. We were trying to understand sort of what's happening. So we haven't played, in, in the paper, we have, we're just kind of highlighting this as, as an issue, but we're not actually trying to, to solve it. Yeah, so we haven't tried this. I'm, I'm wondering whether it would fix, I guess, any mechanism that would reduce interference would fix the problem. And at least sort of that's how we were thinking about it. And in some sense, ensembles and maybe things like this could, could minimize that. And the other questions, so a question second, I believe that.
Yeah, the second question, okay, you, you can read it.
Yeah, sorry. I believe that for continual multitask learning to be successful, abstractions is key. Yes, so, yeah. Yes, but I, I, maybe I have a different interpretation of, of, of systems like DNC and NEC. So yes, abstractions are useful. I'm mostly thinking more about like local updates and like non-parametric components to your system. And that's sort of how I think to a certain extent about this. So I, I think, you know, there was a point where external memory systems were in vogue and a lot of people were working on them. They never, you know, managed to give you the kind of performance you'd get from transformers. And I don't think a lot of people are now playing with them. But I think they have some really interesting properties that, you know, the, the transformers and so forth don't have. And they might make sense to be revisited because of that. And in particular, in, in a system like that, you know, you would, you'd have this almost non-parametric component, which is your external memory. And that sort of can help you to deal with some of these issues that we see in continual learning. I mean, abstractions are useful in the sense that if you have the right abstractions, then you have the, the invariances that we're talking about. So like, okay, if the, if you have the right abstractions, that means that even though I'm going to a next task, the same abstractions are useful to decompose the problem. So from that point onwards, there's no difference in your distribution, the way you're seeing it. But I believe that, you know, getting those kind of the right abstraction, if that was sort of the direction the question was going to, getting those kind of abstractions is hard without knowing anything about the task that will come next, if that makes any sense. Don't know if I've answered the question, but yeah.
Certainly interesting comments and thoughts. Are there any other questions from the audience? If not, if I may, I would like to pick up on some of the things you were mentioning before. I, I suspect that when you're trying to, to get a good weight between, you know, learning, learning common aspects across tasks and specific aspects across tasks, that, that this, in the, in an efficient model, this would be, the weighting of this would be learned from the data, it would be driven by the data. But then, if your data also change, I, it's not quite clear to me what in, in, in your experience would be the most efficient approach or strategy to train models that are both generalizable to new tasks, but also to changes in data distribution. I was wondering if you could comment on that a little?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I guess one thought that I have maybe as a, as a critique to like how things have been phrased so far in like a continual learning setting or this kind of spaces is that it's potentially, it is potentially meaningless to think about this without having any kind of description of what the difference is. But like, basically, I, basically, there's no free lunch, right? So if we're, like, it's really hard to know what is specific to the task that we're learning right now and what is general, and to help you to generalize later. So I, I think what we would be useful, useful is to come up with tools of understanding, you know, how the distribution is changing potentially. And again, like, the question as, as always, is to find that right balance between a generic enough description that doesn't forces us to know everything that will come. And yeah, so, so I, I mean, I think at some point we will be forced to start making assumptions and it will be, we'll be forced to start, you know, being more specific when we want to generalize, when we want to transfer, to say to what things do we want to transfer and, and, and in order to have what we exploit. So for example, I do like, and I do think it's sort of in continual learning, because in machine learning, it's been explored a lot, but in continual learning, this idea of invariance is, it's sort of to a big extent underexplored. And I think the question for me there is like, you know, can we come up with very interesting, you know, families of transformations and, and come up with systems that are trying to be invariant to this family of transformations in, in, in meaningful ways? But yeah, I guess to answer your question, I think the issue is, it's easy for us to talk about specific and, 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 and generic part of the problem. But for a neural net, it, it, you know, it doesn't have this knowledge of what is specific and what is not. So you need to give it somehow and that can either come through the data, though I don't always like that, or it can come through a particular inductive bias or basically by us defining beforehand what kind of changes of distributions we care about. And then, yeah, thinking about systems that can exploit that in, in a particular way. So, so yeah, so I'm, I'm slowly kind of moving more and more towards, we need to be more specific and we can't just treat everything as a black box and throw data at it and try to train it.
Interesting.
We need to specify, yeah.
Well, thank you so much. I, I really enjoyed your presentation and also the subsequent discussion. And thank you so much for taking time out at a, at the time of the day that's challenging. It was wonderful to have you here. If you can stay on, it would be great, of course, but if you have to pop off, I fully understand. Thank you again for, for joining the session.
Thank you.
So that brings us to our next speaker. I think you can share your screen if you like.
Okay.
Does work. So perhaps I can, in the meantime, already introduce our next speaker. So. Our next speaker is Chi Chi. He will present joint work with Ivan Kock on their innovative approach to graph neural networks. They are research engineers at Rolls Royce. Ivan studied aerospace engineering at Imperial College London, or he, he read engineering in Cambridge. I much look forward to their presentation on Graphic Subal Net and the importance of feature and loss function design for traffic prediction.
Awesome. Hi, yeah. So as mentioned, my name is Chi. This is our presentation, Graph Ensemble Net and the Importance of Feature and Loss Design Function for Traffic Prediction. So I just mentioned there, our team is two people, myself and Ivan. And hopefully Ivan always jump in mid, towards the end of this presentation, well, and give you some insights. So a little bit about ourselves. So we both currently work at Rolls Royce in the UK. And as mentioned before, we're both engineers by education. We've gotten really excited about AI and machine learning over the past few years. I'm really enjoyed upskilling in our spare time around these topics. And actually, both within the past 12 months moved towards more AI and data science roles within the company. So I'll quickly talk about the competition, just in case anyone's forgotten since the morning. So in this competition, again, we're given, similar to last year, we're given 12 frames. And then we're asked to predict this time up to an hour in advance. And last place predicts six of the 12 frames in the next hour. So here, the, the green ones are illustrated of what we're asked to predict. And each frame actually encodes five minutes of traffic data. And they have, you know, height 495 and width 436. And each, and then we are given nine channels, eight channels covering speed and volume in four directions, plus another channel covering the instance, which you're actually not asked to predict. And then we have to do this across three cities, Berlin, Moscow and Istanbul. So we talked two approaches. So our first approach was to build on the success of the unit from last year. And we tried to enhance this, the work last year with feature and loss function design. And then as a separate approach, we also wanted to look at graph neural networks and see if we could successfully apply graph neural networks to this problem. Again, building on some of the graph neural network work from last year. So for the data preparation, so for both of these, the initial step was to collapse the time dimension. So here we would, we sort of collapse all the time, the 12 time dimensions into the channel dimension. And this gave us a shape, a starting shape of the image and 108 channels. In terms of the unit architecture, we, this remained largely unchanged from last year's top solution. Some been presented before as well and some improvements there. So we basically stuck with last year's and then we focused on how can we improve the performance of this architecture with feature, feature design and also loss functions, loss function design as well. And this slide basically summarizes our, our experiments and our journey through with All on Berlin. So this shows the, the zero here is the Berlin mean baseline score. And this shows our gradual improvements as we try different techniques. So you notice that the baseline is this big bar, so that baseline unit gave us the most improvements. And then we managed to eke out some extra improvements through different techniques. I think it's, it's worth pointing out here that the different sizes of these bars might not be purely reflective of how good the techniques are because it's like a gradual change, so we're not, we're not completely confident that these are independent. So if we change the order, the bars might change as well. So we'll quickly take you through the different techniques we use. So first and one that we found most interesting was, we asked the model to train, we trained the model to predict all 12 frames instead of just the six that we wanted. And that gave us an interesting improvement. So in terms of these sort of frames here, what, what we essentially did was during training, we also asked the models to predict the gray boxes here. And then we calculated the loss based on all of those 12 frames instead of just the six that were asked to predict. And then obviously, in testing and evaluation and submission, we, we dropped those gray frames. And that gave us a significant benefit. We also normalized the inputs and that gave us quite a big benefit as well. And then we started doing, I think, people have already mentioned this earlier on today. We added the city static features. And in our case, it did give us a small bit of benefit. We also added time of day feature. And again, this gave us some benefits. And then we added some aggregation features. So we calculated them per channel, mean, standard deviations and ranges of the, the features per pixel. We also added a input mass. So this is calculated from the road network that we'll talk about later in the graph work. Essentially, this sort of, in our inputs, we, we essentially assumed any pixel which had a value at any time of volume above, below five, would, we just assumed that was zero. And that gave us some benefit as well. So all of these combined gave us our overall unit solution. And that gave us our leaderboard, that pretty much gave us our leaderboard score, which was fourth in this competition. So I mentioned before, in parallel, we, we looked at graph neural networks. And we wanted to see if we could improve on last year's solution, but also make a competitive solution to the unit. So our intuition behind why we thought graph neural networks would be useful for this problem, because we felt that intuitively, it feels like the, the amount of traffic on, on the road, the amount of traffic that one road affects another road is, is dependent on how they're connected and not necessarily the spatial proximity. So on the right, on the left here, this is a maps image of somewhere in the northwest of England. And you can see the, the yellow, big yellow line here is the M6. And in this stretch, there's actually no junctions coming off this motorway, so this high speed road. And therefore, we, we feel that, you know, if, if a accident happened on one of these small roads that are very close to it, it ness, it wouldn't necessarily affect the traffic on this high speed junction, which goes all the way through. So therefore, we feel that if we had the description in terms of a graph and looking at the connections, these two roads might not actually be so closely connected if you, if you look at it from a graph perspective. And so we thought that that would help, that would help you, I guess, add some physics or add some sort of real understanding into how the information can propagate around and also perhaps help some of the methods propagate over space quicker as well. So in order to use a graph based approach, we first needed to work out what are nodes and what are edges. So to do this, we took the max volume across all the frames for a particular city. And, and this plot on here shows the max volume. I guess strictly speaking, a road should be any pixel which has a max volume of above zero, because that means there's some sort of traffic in there. Eventually, we end up settling with defining it as any pixel with a max volume of five. And then, once we've done this, we then are able to get the nodes and edges. So the nodes are defined as any of the pixels which are alive. And then, because we don't know the actual road network, we have to assume that any adjacent nodes to the node that we have is connected by an edge. And so how did we choose this five number? We looked at different values. So if you look at any pixel with a max volume above zero, so I guess strictly speaking, this should be the road network. It covers, what we found, it covers 82% of the image. So we end up choosing five. And then the reason we didn't go any higher is, as you go higher, we were hoping that, you know, the roads would, the important roads or roads would become clearer. But you notice that in, in the, in the regions where it's not as densely populated with roads, you, you start to lose your road network. So we're not sure that that would have actually given much benefit in terms of the, in terms of having, in terms of using the advantages of a graph neural network. So once we settled with the max on the five, we then also did some feature design. So similar to the unit, we added the static city features. We also appended the time of day feature. And then similar to what the solution last year in the graphical network worked did, we added the pixel coordinates and so that increases the channels by two. We also standardized our inputs by mean and some, using the mean and some deviation. Obviously, didn't change the number of channels. And then to sort of speed up, save a bit of memory, we replaced the first six frames, six timeframes with the mean, min and max frame. And that gave us a slightly smaller footprint. So having done all that, then we feed this through to our graphical network architecture. So this was based on last year's work as well. So similar to last year, we, your inputs are passed through a sequence of, of, in this case, I think similar to last year, four blocks. Last year, it was called the, the res block. This year, we, we've got a slightly different architecture inside those blocks. And then they will come out and be concated with the inputs again and pass through a final graph filter to the output. So within this ensemble block, we made some changes. So last year, it went through this, this Cheb comm. But this year, we also passed it through two of the different graph convolutional filters, pass some layer norms and then average those out before passing on to the next block. So in terms of the choice of these graph convolutional filters, so we were using PyTorch geometric, like, the PyTorch geometric library. And if you go on there, you end up with a list of the 20, 30 different types of filters. And there's lots of work around this area. So in choosing our filters, we decided to prioritize ones that, you know, we thought were, well, that were fast because we had limited resources. And also tried to make them as different as possible, so that we hope they were captures of different aspects of the, of the graph. And then, yes, and then, and, and then we were hoping. yes, and then, and, and then we were hoping. And then also we looked at, you know, how successful they were. So these are, I guess, the Sage Con and the more recent developments in graph convolutional filters as well. And so that was our thought process in selecting those three filters. And then in terms of the results, we can see that in our experiments, our graph on some of that this year produced slightly better results than the graph present from last year. But neither of them could really compete with the unit when we compared it on the Berlin experiments. And then finally, the, the show is the leaderboard score. So again, the graph on someone that was able to significantly beat the mean baseline, but still not able to compete with the unit. So that's some thoughts as to why around graphing your networks and, and how we can make them competitive. So initially we thought would, would graphing your networks be more competitive if we had the pre spatially aggregated data? So we saw there how trying to derive this graph, trying to write this graph from the road network and in this very densely, densely defined road network. And we felt that that perhaps was some of the reason why we weren't competitive with the unit. But then we thought, if that's not possible, would it be possible to get some benefit from just knowing what the road network actually looked like? And so that might help in defining these edges. So as mentioned before, we have to assume in, in our work that any adjacent node which is alive is connected to our sort of central node. But I think we already showed, we already saw this morning from some of the, from some of the, the actual data that, you know, if we had the road network, we might know that these two adjacent nodes aren't, aren't actually connected. And then we started thinking more widely, you know, how could graphs be useful? Could a hybrid approach be useful? It looked like units were quite, seemed very powerful in highlighting, you know, broad regions where, where there might be traffic concerns. And then maybe we could add a graph neural network to do road level predictions. And we think this might be important depending on the types of interventions that we want to do with the knowledge game from these predictions. So if you want to help traffic by doing some sorts of road level interventions, then a graph neural network approach might be very useful there because that gives you your granularity in terms of the road network. So that's some sort of top level thoughts about what we think might be interesting to explore. We also had some thoughts around the, the work that we were doing in loss design, loss function design, and Ivan will quickly talk about that.
Thank you, Chi. So to wrap up this presentation, I want to briefly touch on the potential of loss function design for traffic forecast. Earlier, she mentioned that we change our loss function from just considering the six frame to 12 frames. And to our surprise, this seemingly minor change that gave us some improvement. While we don't fully understand the mechanism as to why that is the case, it highlighted the importance of loss function design and hinted that further improvement could be possible via loss function refinement. As suggested by some participant from last year competition, one could use something like a generative adversarial network. Why a GAN would work, should work for, for traffic forecast, it would require training of both a generator, which is the unit itself, as well as an additional discriminator. And this essentially increased the size of the model and hence the computational cost. And given the time pressure of the competition, this option is simply untenable. Another option would be to use something similar to the feature reconstruction loss proposed by Johnson et al. in this particular paper here. In this method, both the prediction from the unit and the target are passed through some pre-trained image network. And in this case, proposed by Johnson, the, the pre-trained network use was a VGG16. And losses are calculated at various layer of the pre-trained network. The beauty of this method is that it doesn't require any additional training. But in order for it to work in traffic forecast, we would have to slot in one or perhaps two extra layer just before the pre-trained network. And this is to reduce the number of channels down to just the three channels, algae and RGB channels. And also perform extra normalization in order to ensure whatever goes into a pre-trained network is compatible to how it was being trained. And one other reservation we, we had with this method was that although the traffic data was in the form of images, they were not like typical images like a dog or a cat. And this major contextual difference between the pre-trained network and the unit may reduce the effectiveness of this particular method. And this brings me to our proposal. So instead of using an external network in, in the loss function, why, why don't we use the very network that we are trying to train for this particular purpose? And here, both the prediction from the target are passed through the encode the part of the unit for a second time. And various signal layer losses are calculated at each layer just before the average pooling operation. The overall loss, the overall loss of which the gradient is back propagated during model update is a weighted sum of all these hidden layer losses. And the benefit of this method is twofold. First, the models stay, stay exactly the same size as before. There is no increase in the number of parameters in the model. And second, there won't be any contextual compatibility issue here. Unfortunately, given the time limit that we had in the competition, we couldn't really quantify the improvement in this method. However, from the limits of testing that we did, we saw its ability in suppressing the hidden layer losses from growing, especially those from deeper layers. And so we think that this method has the potential to train better performing models. And to conclude, so in this presentation, we've gone through some of the things that we've done such as feature and loss function design and they just significantly improved the result compared to last year and that places to number four on the leaderboard. And we particularly like the loss function design as it does not increase model size. And we think that it could potentially bring us even closer to a winning solution, to a winning solution. And, and as she has mentioned, right now, graph neural network can beat the mean baseline, but so far we can't see beating the, the unit solution at the moment. But we think that there are still plenty of room for improvement because right now most of the competitors are so focused on unit. And I think if the same amount of effort is being put into graph neural network, certainly much more improvement could be squeezed out. And as she also also mentioned that the, the data, the way how the data is being aggregated spatially, we think it's a significant, it's a, it's a, it's a cost that inhibit the ability of the, of the potential of GNN. And perhaps by changing the way how the data is being aggregated and perhaps having information of how roads are being connected could unlock the potential of GNN and make it even more competitive compared to unit. And that's wrap up our presentation.
Well, thank you very, very much for this really interesting section of what, what you've tried and what, what benefits you see. And where particularly what additional potentials for improvements you see. So we, we hope to see you in coming years as well. And there were actually a number of questions on, on the, on the chat. You've certainly touched a raw nerve with the graph neural networks. I, I know that at least Henry Martin is a great fan of this approach and he says it's really, really cool what, what you've done here. And he has a few specific questions. I, I will read them out. You can also read them on the chat if it's, that's easier than listening to me talk. But for the, our guests on the YouTube channel, I will, I will repeat the questions. So the first question by, by Henry is that he says he thought that the missing cooling operations are a great problem as networks otherwise very quickly get too big for the GPU. Did you have the same problem or did you think about adding pooling methods, for instance, based on different thresholds?
I can take this one. So well, definitely the, the availability of GPU RAM has been one of our biggest headaches. So I just want to point out that we, neither of us had access to any powerful computers. So we, we had to rely on freely available compute instance online. So we started off doing it on Kaggle and Kaggle kernel. And as you can imagine, it quickly turns out to be not, not really feasible for this particular project. And hence we migrated to paper space gradient where we had limited access to one Nvidia P5000 GPU. And, and early in the, in the, in, in the, in the competition, we tried to explore various different kinds of unit architectures. So for example, we did try one implementation of a 3D unit so that we don't have to aggregate the time channel to the other features. So that we, we think that that may, that may help because it preserved the temporal dimension of the data. And, and the other thing that we tried is something called unit plus plus. And again, it's very similar to the HR net, which the second team proposed. But both the problem really struggled in a sense that they are way, way bigger than the unit that the, the proposed unit implementation that we have here in terms of parameter space. So they are, it contained a lot more parameters and, and we ended up, so if we were to use those method, we would have to reduce our batch size to like maybe one or even two and, and, and it's just become a bit silly. So, so it has to be, we, we took a parametric approach and, and, and resort to this particular unit architecture such that we can balance the, both the memory usage and the runtime required to train model.
Thank you very much. There was a second question regarding mask thresholds. Henry writes that he always thought that this mask based graph creating is a major weak point of the graph creation. Mostly because when considering GPS error, either almost all pixels are above the thresholds and you end up with the grid graph. Or you can extract the roads, but then you have the problem that the losses evaluated on pixels that are normally next to the roads. He says he thinks that it might maybe help to have a fully connected layer in the end to smooth or smear out the GNN predictions. What are your thoughts on this? Do you think this might help?
I think in my initial ones, I, I, I did have a fully connected layer at the end and it didn't give that much benefit. But I guess, I guess the interesting note is, so is the reason that we see this smeared out thing because of GPS error? Or is it just the fact that there are so many roads within the, within the each sort of block and at some time they're on? I, it's something that, just because I, I think, I think unless you, I think the issue is when we look at the map and it's so densely connected, then it kind of, you, you then kind of go. If you're trying to make a graph from that, you, you kind of say, oh, you might as well use a CNN because everything is connected anyway. And I guess that's the, I guess it would only be powerful if there was some sort of sparsity in, in, in the road network. Yeah. So I'm not, because it feels like, I don't know, it usually feels like when I'm driving in a car, my GPS is good enough to know what road I am most of the time. So my initial thoughts were that the, the, the sort of denseness of the road network was just because there were lots of roads in each, each zone. So at some, some point there were, there was a car in there.
I don't know, maybe Michael, who is also on the call, can comment regarding the question of the density of the roads within each spatial bin. Henry is following up on his original question where he says he meant pooling specifically for the graph neural networks. I don't know whether you want to comment, Ivan or.
Yeah. So we, so we tried some, I mean, I did try to implement a new unit type thing and then it just got too big for the, it took too long to train for me to get any decent feedback. I think, I guess, I guess pooling, if you start to, if you mean sort of spatial pooling, I guess the issue is if you start smoothing out even more, then you, you lose that. I guess you lose that granularity that you sort of, you want to be able to predict accurately. So yeah, so it didn't, I didn't try to go down that approach. I was more interested in trying to sort of get more different techniques in or more, yeah, more different types of, of, of convolutional filters in, that's what I was thinking.
Thank you. There's a different comment and question by Michael Kopp. He says he really very much liked your internal loss function. I actually also thought that was a cool approach. And he said, just that you're essentially forcing features in each network horizontal connection to be similar. And he wonders if you have an intuitive understanding what that might mean.
Yeah. So this method started off with the intuition where, where, so what, what constitute as a good prediction? So right now, if you just use the pixel Y M S E loss, then what you're asking is the pixel value should roughly looks the same as your target. And as one of the earlier presentations this morning pointed out, where you can have two prediction that looks quite different, but having very similar MS pixel wise M S E loss. And that essentially highlights the problem that just using pixel Y M S E loss function, it doesn't really capture some of the, I guess, a, a more higher level features. So then we're coming along and think about how we keep, we can potentially make it better. And essentially what we come to is that if a picture has, if, if a, if a prediction is good, it should also contain the same amount of information that allows you to predict. Well, it should carry the same amount of predictive, predict capability to predict the following hour as a target. So that, so that sort of like introduced this idea of passing both the target and, and, and and the prediction through the unit a second time. Because if, if you pass through them the second time and they both look the same, it tells you that your prediction and your target both carry the same amount of predictive capability for the following hour. So that's where we're coming along and, and it's actually very similar to the, to the VGG16 method that that was proposed. So it's sort of like looking into the, 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 the style and the contact, the, the, the texture of the, of the image and see how similar they are. And, and although we haven't got, we've got the number to back it up, but then in this sort of like mini trials that we, we, we do and we compare it without using this loss method. And what you notice is that when you start check training, almost all the layers are behaving, behaving quite well, where they gradually decrease the defeat, the hidden layer loss do decrease over time. But then further down the training, then you start to realize that especially for the hidden layer losses, they, they start to become a bit more random. Usually the first layer are always quite well behaved, but then for the deeper layer, you start to struggle to continuously improve those layer. And so the one, one other intention of this loss method is to try to suppress those random behavior for down the line to aid the hidden layer to up or basically assist the hidden layer to learn better.
Thank you very much. There's a comment by Keith Mas saying that he thinks it might be interesting to model the graph neural networks locally or pool nodes as in the paper that he refers to on the chat. And then make a network of what is left by local node aggregation, possibly solving the halo effect. What are your, do you have maybe have any comments or thoughts for, for him?
Yeah, that sounds like, that sounds like, yeah. So I guess. Okay. So I guess the, the idea is that for each individual slice, if you, if you look at the, yeah, if you look at the pooling, then you might be able to compile different slices to work out a better road network from the, the data. Is that what? To try and understand where the road network is, is that, is that what the suggestion is?
Um, I don't know, tease. Maybe you want to comment or clarify in the chat?
Should I click on the link?
Yes, I tried that, right? As well now, I'm a bit slow. The paper that he refers to is called to its sparse hierarchical graph classifiers by Kangia et al. from 2018. I don't know enough about the paper to comment. I don't know if keys you want to comment further. He says it's some type of unsupervised node clustering.
Okay. But it feels like the easiest way would be to just to get hold of the road network, I guess. Cause I guess that is no. Okay. But it feels like the easiest way would be to just to get hold of the road network, I guess, because I guess that is noable. Um. That information is out there. Um. So I guess maybe combining the two. Yeah, yeah. So maybe combining the two. Could be an interesting approach.
And then perhaps as as a final question, Peter Roher Russo says he really enjoyed your talk. And he was wondering if you suffered um from different scales uh at each loss and how you adjusted.
So um you point out rightly that um at each layer, uh then the activation will look quite different. So therefore, when you try to calculate a a loss uh at each layer, they will come off at different scale and that's definitely going to be the case. So 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 one thing that we did was that um we started off using it as symmetric instead of a loss function. So you 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 still train your model using just a a simple um pixel wise M S E loss. But then you can use this um proposed hidden loss function as a metric to monitor how they would behave uh under those situation. And and once you've done a sufficient number of times, then you will start to have a feeling in terms of how um each of the 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 scale of each of the layers. And once you've learned that, then uh we 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 essentially um uh normalize the losses from each layer such that they are of a similar scale which where which you can then um soft linearly aggregate them together.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there are no further questions from the audience, um I wish to thank both of you, uh Chi and Ivan, again for the really interesting presentation and for taking part. And we will move to the next speaker, please.
Thank you. Thank you much.
Hey, do you want to try sharing your screen?
Yes, of course.
Wonderful. So let me welcome and introduce Jason Toki, um machine learning engineer at Alkira Technologies in Cambridge, where he follows his research interest in machine learning for real world applications and transport and mobility. He will tell us today about his temporal autoencoder for frame prediction, featuring skip connections to preserve topology and triangular cyclic learning for efficiency. Yeah, I look forward to your talk.
Thank you, David, for that introduction. Uh. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you to the I A R A I for putting together this uh this session for all of us to discuss and come together to discuss our solutions to this competition. It's just a shame that we can't all be together at NURIPS. Uh. But fingers crossed for next year, everything will be okay. So uh my name is Jay and I'm going to pre uh present Alkira Technologies' uh solution for the traffic forecast, our temporal autoencoder for for frame prediction. Um. But before I get on to that, just a little bit about who we are. Uh. We're an AI software startup, uh providing real time analytics to operate and optimize road infrastructure dynamically. Um. We're based in the UK in Cambridge. And my peers and I share a lot of experience from many widely respected companies and institutions. I will briefly discuss a few things that we do, but I'll leave that for later. So let's get straight into our solution. So our solution, full name was a temporal autoencoder with unit style skip connections for frame prediction. So using this uh model that we developed, we were able to obtain fairly competitive mean squared error score of one point two seven five times ten to the minus three, putting us in fifth. We were able to achieve this loss by using cyclical learning rates that enabled us to achieve these small losses in fewer or the same number of epochs than what traditional approaches would use. So a little summary about what I'll be going over today. I'll briefly describe the task and the data details, just in case uh people have just joined the Zoom or forgotten from this morning. I'll go over our data preparation approaches, our temporal autoencoder model, as well as some iteration on how we uh got to our final model, a little bit about our training process and using the cyclical learning rates, our process for making predictions, our results evaluation, and a little bit about future work and other things we would like to try, as well as some closing remarks. And in the topic of our, of of my talk, you know, the content's in a nice little unit shape there. So what was the task about? It was traffic map prediction for three cities, Berlin, Istanbul and Moscow. So these images were four hundred ninety five pixels by four hundred and thirty six pixels, where each pixel represents a hundred meters by a hundred meters. And they were split up into frames where each frame encompassed a five minute time period. So in a twenty four hour day, the there were two hundred eighty eight frames. So one day of data could be represented by a four dimensional tensor of size two hundred eighty eight by four hundred ninety five by four hundred and thirty six by nine. So these were the time, which is the frames, the height, width and the channels. So what are these channels or visually, what do they look like? So channels one and two show the average speed and aggregated volume of entities traveling northeast. As you can see from the diagram on the right, the data is heading northeast. Channels three and four for the speed and volume heading northwest. Channels five and six going southeast and seven and eight going southwest. With the ninth channel showing road incidents. So you can see little spots on this image here denoting an area where a road incident has happened. So the crux of the problem for the traffic forecast competition was to predict the speed and volume at these different headings. So making predictions for channels one through eight. In total, there are one hundred eighty one days of training data for each city. Now, before I go on to how we went about preparing the data, I just wanted to point out something that I noticed when creating a binary mask. So when creating a binary mask with one day of data for for Berlin, this is what the data looked like. In terms of creating the binary mask, this was achieved by finding if a pixel ever had any data during that day. And if so, switch that pixel on. If that pixel never had any data, switch that pixel off. That way you can easily identify the topology of the network of of the road and where where the roads are. And but when creating this mask using the full training suite, the full hundred eighty one days of data, the mask then looks like this. And you end up getting regions which are just pure white, even when zooming in, there's there's no discrepancies of where um other roads might be. So when comparing the two, um there may be some form of noise in the data. So if we were to zoom in on a particular part and and blow it up, we can obviously see that some of these road networks have gone from being one pixel to four, five, six pixels. And obviously, a road network isn't going to be as wide as, you know, four hundred, five hundred meters. So there's obviously some form of noise there which potentially could be caused by GPS drift. This is just something I I found interesting during data exploration and uh thought it'd be interesting to mention. I will also come back to binary masks in the prediction part of my talk. So a little bit about data preparation. We felt there were two main factors when looking at data preparation, the sampling strategy and the preprocessing. So in terms of the sampling strategy, this is about splitting up the time channel, so the frames. One approach you could do is uh using a non-overlapping approach. So if you you were to choose an input sequence of twelve and an output sequence of twelve, thus using the previous hour to to predict the next hour, your um sampling will sort of look similar to this diagram. You're using the reds to then predict the greens. Then your next set of reds, which is your next set of train, will be uh non-overlapping from where the greens are. And another approach could be for overlapping, where you literally just have a sliding window of one, obviously creating a lot more data because you don't have a sliding window of twenty four, which you would have with a non-overlapping approach. So in total, if you were to use a input and output sequence of twelve, so using the previous hour to predict the next hour, you end up with either twelve or two hundred and sixty five training sequences per day for each city or two thousand one hundred seventy two or forty seven thousand nine hundred and sixty five training sequences per city using these two approaches. Now, when using the overlapping approach, this took roughly around nine and a half hours for a single epoch. Whereas using the non-overlapping approach took roughly nine and a half hours for training on twenty eight epochs, so almost a full train really. And in terms of comparisons of the losses during that train, there didn't really seem to be a huge amount of difference. So in the end, we opted for a non-overlapping strategy because it allowed a quick model iteration due to the compromise by reducing training time. One other thing to consider as well is that by doing an overlapping strategy, the subsequent data samples will also be very correlated as only one data point is different for the subsequent samples. And this could end up resulting in a model focusing on features that favor the fact the data is very similar. Whereas with a non-overlapping approach for for this, it could be considered slightly more robust in these regards as the samples are less dependent and less correlated on the previous ones. And in terms of preprocessing, we opted just for standard computer vision approach of dividing by two five five for normalization. And to handle the ninth channel, we opted to try out a one hot encoding approach where if a road incident had occurred, set that pixel to one, and if it didn't, set it to zero. For initial model um iteration, we decided to actually remove this ninth channel to start off aiming for a completely computer vision and image processing approach with the aim to introduce this back in in the future. So obviously, this problem tackles both spatial and temporal dimensions. So we want to capture both of these. We saw this problem as both a sequence prediction task as well as an image to image translation task. So for usual sequence prediction, a lot of approaches opt to use L S T M layers in their network. However, for a problem like this, an L S T M wouldn't really be suitable because for a standard L S T M, the inputs are vectors and our inputs are images. So in order to rectify this, we opted to use a variant of the L S T M, which is the convolutional L S T M. But what is different between these these two? Um. Essentially, it's just the computation on how they handle the weight matrices. So if we just take this as an example, the only thing that changes is between a vanilla L S T M and a convolutional L S T M is that the vector input is now changed to a matrix input, thus allowing images to now be inputs. The vector multiplication is replaced with a convolutional operation, thus enabling us to obtain spatial features via convolution. And the fact that it's still an L S T M architecture means that we can also obtain temporal features. So in terms of our model architecture, we started off with a fairly simple base model. This is an autoencoder with three convolutional L S T Ms on the encoder, three convolutional L S T Ms on the decoder. The input is twelve frames of the data, so the previous hour. And then the output is another twelve frames, which is the predicted future hour. And to determine the mean squared error, these outputted predicted frames are then compared with the ground truth, twelve frames, to obtain this mean squared error score of one point two eight times ten to the minus three. Uh. You can also notice that there's no down sampling for this base model. Uh. One reason we opted initially to not have the down sampling was that we felt that by having a down sampling and then a subsequent up sampling, there would be a loss in topological features of the city. One other thing to note as well is that the kernel size for the convolutional L S T Ms are were seven, seven by seven. Now, for a usual computer vision uh problem, you mainly see fairly small kernel sizes, one by one, three by three, and occasionally five by five. But when we use these fairly small kernel sizes, we found that their training was stalling. And we felt this might have been due to the fact that these road areas are moving by a number of pixels, as could be seen by that uh GPS drift. And so by having a three by three, it it may lose some of those um features within neighboring road networks. So we opted for a seven by seven to thus encompass the region in which we felt that the um desired road networks would stay within and also a little bit of dependency on how how they change. So the next model iteration was this base model, but with down sampling. And the down sampling was achieved via a three D max pool. And the up sampling was achieved through a transpose convolution so that the the model would be able to learn the optimal upscaling. When compared with the base model, the mean squared error actually increased. Um. And we feel that our hypothesis of the down sampling affecting the topological features may be apparent here. However, the the loss only increased by a slight amount. And one good thing about this model is that now three of the six convolutional L S T M layers now have inputs that are half the size of the base model. So half the network is dealing with smaller inputs. This made training a lot quicker. And considering that the loss was only ever so slightly increased, we decided to stick with this model and iterate on this model. And in order to rectify our our hypothesis of loss of topological features, we decided to add uh skip connections in a similar vein to how a unit incorporates skip connections. And by doing this and training with a cyclical learning rate, we were actually able to obtain a loss of one point two five times ten to the minus three, which was actually considerably lower when compared to the base model and the base model with down sampling. One other thing I would like to also point out is that we trained this model architecture on each of the three cities. We opted not to um have one set of weights or one model encompassing all three cities. Because uh we felt the driving culture and driving behavior is going to be different amongst the three cities, each within three countries. How people drive in Germany is going to be different to how people drive in Turkey, to how people drive in in Russia. So we decided to keep with the same model architecture, but train it each on the separate cities. So in terms of the training process, we trained with four Nvidia ten eighty TIs with twenty eight epochs and a batch size of four. The learning optimizer used was Adam. And we actually used a cyclical learning rate that oscillated between one times ten to the minus seven and two times ten to the minus three. Now, this oscillated with a triangular nature with seven full oscillations being made during this twenty eight epoch training cycle. Now, obviously, if you're oscillating between the learning rate, your overall training and validation loss is also going to go up and down with a general trend going downwards. This can be seen in the training and validation loss uh graph. You can clearly see the oscillations within within these, but with the overall trend going down. Now, why use a cyclical learning rate? The main reason to use them is to avoid saddle points and avoiding local minimum. So when training our models with just a standard Adam or with a learning rate of one times ten to the minus three, we found that our learning was was stalling at a specific loss. So we felt that we were stuck in some saddle point or some local minimum. And usually to rectify a problem like this, you would just opt to using a higher learning rate, which we did. Um. However, upon doing this, we noticed that a saddle point wasn't being reached. Um. But after a certain point, the loss then started to diverge rather than converge. So using that higher learning rate enabled us to provide the network with the gradients to escape the saddle point and the local minimum. But once it had done that, the gradients were then too big and caused a divergence. Whereas if you're using a cyclical learning rate, because it oscillates between a minimum and a maximum, if chosen carefully and you reach a saddle point or a local minimum, when the learning rate increases, it provides the gradients to escape these points. And um gives you a greater chance of reaching that global minimum. And because once it's um escaped those points, the learning rate then doesn't increase a huge amount and then starts decreasing, the loss can then converge. And when training without cyclical learning rate for our final model, this was the mean squared error achieved, one point two eight times ten to the minus three, but changing nothing about the model uh and using a cyclical. But changing nothing about the model uh and using a cyclical learning rate, we're able to make quite a significant improvement with only the cyclical rate being the the difference. So in terms of making predictions, we used the previous hour to predict the next hour, obviously. So the previous hour had twelve prediction time bins and the the prediction is for the next hour, which will also be twelve time bins because we chose an input sequence of twelve and an output sequence of twelve, keeping that five minute granularity. So those uh twelve prediction time bins were were these following times. However, for the competition, only six were of interest, so we uh filtered away the six that were not of interest from the predictions prior to submission. And additionally, we also did some smoothing using a binary mask. Now, going back to what I was saying about the G P S drift, if we were to multiply the predictions with a binary mask made from only a handful of data, this would actually hamper the predictions a lot because it doesn't incorporate all of the regions where that road may exist due to the drift. So we ended up using the binary mask that was made using the entire training data for each specific city. This only made an ever so slight improvement, which to me suggests that the unit structure with the skip connections actually was able to learn the topological features and in essence, the the city mask fairly well. So in terms of the results, just a quick reminder of what the base model looks like and the base model with down sampling. When comparing these two, you can actually see that the base model performed better in all of the cities in terms of the validation mean squared error when compared to the base model with down sampling. And the base model with down sampling actually had a increase in the mean squared error by point two seven eight percent. But like I said, this provided a um quicker training, so we decided to stick with that model and add skip connections, which resulted in our final model. And when comparing the base model with the final model, again, the the final model had a better mean squared error, lower mean squared error than than the base model in all of the cities and was a naught point one five three percent improvement. And the the biggest change came from when training the final model without the cyclical learning rate and training the final model with cyclical learning rate. And this produced an overall improvement of two point four one percent. So using the cyclical learning rate actually made more difference than any other change that we've made. And when comparing the base model with the final model trained with a cyclical learning rate, overall had a two point five six percent improvement. And we ended up with a final test score for the competition of one point two seven five times ten to the minus three. So in conclusion, we've presented a temporal autoencoder that uses unit-style skip connections and marries both computer vision and uh sequence prediction techniques. Improved training efficiency, enabling us to use cyclical landing rates to achieve a smaller loss than we would using standard techniques in the same or fewer number of epochs and achieving a fairly competitive score that put us in fifth. So a few additional thoughts about where we would like to take some of this work in the future. So one thing I would like to do is try and find where these errors are localized in in both time and space. So all of the mean squared errors in the tables that I showed were when comparing the predicted twelve frames with the ground truth twelve frames. But obviously, the competition only looked at six particular frames. So we would like to actually see if there's any which of those frames actually encompass most of the error and maybe trialing to focus on the six competition uh centric frames. Um. And also would like to look at GANs as well because they seem to be uh becoming more fruitful in uh papers about frame prediction. One that I have noticed quite a lot is uh pics to pics mainly because of this unit generator and unit being quite successful in these type of problems with frame prediction. And road incidents, we would like to add that channel back in. In the end, we weren't able to incorporate this back in, but we feel it actually might be able to provide some extra insights as well as encoding day of the week, so weekdays zero, Saturday is a one, and maybe also incorporating public holidays as well to try and find this extra little bit of uh improvement. As well as uh trying to incorporate more of the competition's static data such as the locations of restaurants, hospitals, parking, shops and um public transport. So uh just a few closing remarks. Um I briefly went over who we are, but I'd just like to spend a tiny bit about a bit of time about what we do. So uh we're a A I software uh startup building tools and machine learning to power the power-driven infrastructure. So if you actually look at today's climate, there's lots of uh data collection and within the mobility sector, lots of sensors capturing lots of data. So we actually provide real-time data and hosting and access to this data. And then we use machine learning models to provide analytics and enrichment on top of that. So traffic forecast actually kind of lies within this stage two because the data has been provided in such a nice format and then us, the competitors, are providing the enrichment and the analytics on top of that. Um in terms of our uh machine learning, we actually have a computer vision pipeline in which we look at road position, lane position, categorizing of vehicles trajectories, as well as anomaly detection, looking at stop vehicles or uh accidents for quicker responses and also time series anomaly detection and forecasting for major road networks. And here's also a link to our lung dashboard, which actually provides an analysis on data from existing sensors and is able to uncover a lot of changes within transport and trouble behavior. Um thank you. If you've got any questions on the the model that we developed, please don't hesitate to contact my email if I can't get to them in this session. And if you would like to have, if you have any questions about us as a company or would like to come and work with us, please contact the bottom email. Uh thank you. And yeah, you got any uh questions?
Thank you very much, Jay, for this uh interesting discussion and talk. Um do we have questions from the audience? If not, I would like to pick up on uh your observation that changing the training training regime, the cyclical um learning rate was in the end the biggest effect uh in improving your model. So I was wondering, have you tried other regimes? Um not not triangular or with some meta shape imposed on it, maybe going like the like this, but then going down or I don't know. Have you tried the different things? Can you comment a little?
Yes, so a couple of the other standards actually use um still a triangular format, but then having some form of exponential decay. I haven't yet tried that, but I would also like to try to see how that works as well as maybe changing the overall structure of the oscillation, maybe opting for something other than a triangle, just a regular sine wave kind of oscillation could be something to also look at.
Thank you. Um Michael Kopp is asking uh if he understood correctly that you did not use the static data for for your model at this stage.
No, not at this stage. Uh we weren't actually able to get onto that, but it is something that we are actively looking to try and incorporate as a own piece of mind, trying to find a little bit more. And I guess also in preparation for next year, should you guys decide to add static data as well, um depending on how you guys feel about it, given how you talked in the the morning session about it.
It it's always a question how someone finds a way to exploit things, you know. Um for instance, uh last year, the impression was that the road network really doesn't help. But then um one of our participants came along, Henry Martin specifically, and showed that while it doesn't help for a single city, it helps with transfer learning. So you know, there are always surprises around each corner and that's what I like about these competitions. People get to try new things. If you had asked me, I wouldn't have thought about the um you know, the learning rate variation as a as a quick hack to more power, but I I really like it. Um there was a question by F F Fanyu uh on the on the chat channel regarding the resources that your models required. Understand you used for ten eighties, but can you maybe say a bit more generally about the the resource requirements of your models and um whether you would construct them differently if you had uh different gear? Maybe you can comment a little.
Yeah, for sure. Um we the yeah, so it was for ten eighty T Is. Um using this approach of convolutional L S T Ms actually filled up a lot of the G P U data fairly quickly. So trying to use batch sizes that were any higher than four actually um weren't able to work. So we'd actually want to try and look into a more memory efficient approach where um maybe convolutional L S T Ms may not be the best way, but we're still having a look to see what might be the best way to handle that. Um obviously, as a lot of the other participants like to uh collapse that time channel with the um with the other channel. So that might be an approach that we look at as well. But we wanted to try and keep them separate, just in case there were temporal features that may have been lost by doing that.
Yeah. Any other questions from the audience? Okay, uh Fanyu is asking if you think whether a pre-trained uh model would work for this competition based on your analyses.
Yeah, possibly. We actually didn't look into any pre-training um but started floating the idea of transfer learning uh towards the end, but didn't get a um a good amount of time to try it. Um initially, we opted um not to go a transfer learning approach for thoughts that maybe topology of the different cities is ingrained within within the weights. But it was something that we wanted to try and look at towards the end. And in terms of pre-training, might actually work to improve again the efficiency. But yes, it's it's still something that we weren't able to look at, but it is on a on a short list of things.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and I hope you you enjoyed this year, and we will see see you around for future iterations of of this challenge.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay. So we moved to our next speaker, please. Would you like to share your screen, Alavi? Wonderful.
Hi, everyone.
Yes, um it's my pleasure to introduce Alavi Bodhiswomo. He pursues doctoral research at Khalifa University in Abu Dhabi after working as a research engineer at Master Institute of Science Technology and New York University Abu Dhabi. His research interests include M I Ms, deep learning and hardware security. For his submission to traffic forecast this year, he maps the seven static and the nine dynamic channels to the same dimension and then applies a Sedanian algebra, and I really look forward to learning about your approach. Welcome.
Thank you for the introduction. Uh as mentioned, my name is Bodhiswomo and my uh uh and the presentation is based on our approach in tackling this this year's traffic forecast challenge. To start with a kind of an outline of what I'm going to be talking about, I'll start with some kind of introduction, but introduction of the tax and the solution. Also, about the network, it's a Sedanian network, the method in terms of data preparation and module, our result and conclusion and possible future works, this is the kind of network that we are that we used. Starting with the introduction, uh this year, data is basically not just a dynamic in nature. We have a static data and a dynamic data. Uh also, as mentioned by his uh orders, it's actually uh divided into five minutes as at the temporal time slots, one to one days of training, anything is a violation and basically five hundred prediction to make, the metric is mean squared error has been scored by others. Likewise, a bit of a discussion will be based on the why uh we tackle these as a multitask segmentation and how our push uh match with this kind of a uh notion. Also, why do we have to use as sixteen components at the end of representation for the time put on that put? This will be discussed as well, but as a brief of what we are meant to be discussing, the input to the data is basically twelve uh twelve different uh which is five minutes, uh ten minutes, up to sixty minutes. And the target is basically six uh things, which is not uh sequential, but they are just uh they are quite uh they are within a sixty minutes as well. I would prefer to start uh start the main discussion here with this Sedanian network because this is the basis of our of 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 our work. Uh by Sedanian, then the next one has definition actually uh comprised of sixteen components. It's an upper complex number and this uh kind of a network, I can help us to tackle some of some kind of challenges that may be multitask in nature. And likewise, it can help us to tackle uh tasks that are multi-modal in nature as well because we can actually represent this kind of modalities as one component, as one of the components of this Sedanian. And why we have and looking at this kind of uh uh numbers, why do we have to choose Sedanian out of uh available uh hyper complex numbers? It's actually based on the number of uh the number of frame that we want to tackle. Because in this network, we have a sixteen, uh we have a twelve different dynamic uh data and one static point. And for this, we decided to use the static data as the lead component of our Sedanian. And why twelve of the twelve uh dynamic uh data were used as a the very first twelve of the fifteen uh imaginary component of the Sedanian? This will, and one of the important thing beside this definition of Sedanian is uh because the the framework that we use is units amongst other kind of frameworks that is available. There might be a need for us to do some concatenation, so it's better that we define how concatenation is being done in Sedanian and any other kind of uh uh hyper complex uh numbers. Because come to think of it, when we have a, that's when you have made general concatenation is basically by putting one activation at the back of the other activation, but this is not the case in the this kind of network. We have to be, we have to preserve the components, which is why to concatenate a Sedanian to the other Sedanian, we have being representing as Sedanian numbers. And now for our, and now for our design being Sedanian, we actually deal with the weights of the network as to be Sedanian and the activations as well as we Sedanian as well. To the big chunk of the network, which is actually the convolution. Convolution in Sedanian is being treated as uh have to be carefully uh constructed. And based on the research on in this kind of hyper complex observation of numbers, uh we find out that we found out that uh to be able to tackling the multiplication of a uh highly dimensional uh numbers like Sedanian, having sixteen dimensions, it is best done by following some kind of recursive multiplication whereby a uh an upper complex number is being represented by a lower dimension uh hyper complex number. By so doing, we could represent a Sedanian by uh two octonions, which is just one step down from Sedanian in the hyper complex to make. The same thing applies to a same thing octonion as a one step down as two continues as well. This allows us to uh get the multiplication to be to to be something that we can actually uh automate rather than trying to do this thing uh individually. So this led to our Sedanian multiplication in which uh when we want to multiply two Sedanian, we have to take each of the Sedanian as two different uh octonions. And by so doing, following this loop of a recursive multiplication, we will be able to extract how the weight functions has to be put together as a matrix for us to get our multiplication. Which is quite going to lead to some, which is going to lead to parameter efficiency, which is one of the good thing about a complex representation because of the parameter use. This might usually led to this, led to this a matrix representation, in which we have our weights being represented in this matrix. And the input activation is yes, why the output is the one. If we try to look a little bit into this weight matrix, we could observe that every part of the components of the weight are reused sixteen times. Which is what led to like a kind of the same kind of parameter reduction as compared to using a real convolution for this kind of activity, kind of, kind of a convolution. However, this, 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 this usability does not have a good does not really affect our network in the sense that we are able to represent in relationship of the activation, because the activation always participated in extracting any of the output activation, because if you look at this much matrix, you can see that for me to get my Y zero. It involves working with all the X from from beginning to the end, basically from X zero to X fifteen. It does not have to be focused on just X zero, which is the case of a group convolution, where the activation is being divided into groups. So going to the model that we use in terms of our methods, we as other people, as most of the solution provided for this year's competition, we also use a unit. However, our encoder or basically anywhere in our network, the convolution that we are using are actually a Sedanian convolution, which a Sedanian convolution. Likewise, also, we notice of one one kind of block that we call the length vector block. And the reason for this, we are going to, I'm going to discuss this in the in subsequent slide. With the network that is being discussed, I would like to make some kind of comments about our data representation. As we, as we aware that we have one static and twelve dynamic based on my introduction, the introduction slide. And also, we are aware that the output is meant to be Sedanian in terms of we don't even need any kind of static output. There is a need for us to represent this thing in a better, in a better way for the Sedanian. Because we in the Sedanian, we have assisting components. Whereas for the data that we have here, we have one static and twelve dynamic. Which even if you are going to consider them as each single component, we still have taken out over sixteen to be used. But for the network that has a sixteen components, Sedanian representation with this kind of thing, we try to follow this kind of routine in the presentation. In the sense that for the Sedanian inputs, the very first component that is the component, we use the static data as the real components. Why the next twelve components, which is in the imaginary components of this Sedanian, we use the dynamic data. What the last three components here were zeroed out. And there, and there are other kind of thing that we could have used here, but perhaps trying to get some kind of component from this dynamic and static for the three, the last three components here, but we decided to sell them out. And and the reason for this is therefore interpretability of our network. Because in this case, we are able to showcase that the very first component being static will have effect on all the dynamics. And this is also going to help in having a single model that can be trained on all the cities, because this component that is static can help us to represent the different cities. Because because it then, because the static components is unique to the city, so we are able to establish this fact following this kind of routine. But in the, in terms of the output layer, the last output, we have also extract the output from the sixteen components Sedanian, which is going to be the output. We decide to use the same routine. However, we extracted the components based on the time that is requested in the prediction. That is required in the precision. On following the location in the input as well. So since the prediction requires us to extract the results for the for five minutes, ten minutes, fifteen minutes, and the likes of this thing, we decide to pick those, just pick those components. And this network, looking, working with this kind of approach, allow us to have a simple network that if you are interested in getting the whole full hour prediction, we can do these things, because we have them available. All it takes is to just use those components as well in the loss function computation. Now going to the discussion on the, on the model block, what does it really have in it? As I mentioned, the first one is the length, the length vector block. The length vector block is to help us in extracting a component, we need to extract a component. And for this network, since we decided to use the static components as the first component of our Sedanian. And since the dynamic components happens to be having nine channels per time per time frame. We have to convert the seven channel static input to nine channel. So we use the length vector block for this. And it's only in this block that you can see anything like pure standard in our model. Next is to talk about the encoder block. And basically, we use a ResNet related kind of encoder block. But the only difference in all of this is that for anywhere, we have to use convolution as I discussed earlier. We use a Sedanian based convolution, which is based on the multiplication routine that I discussed also in one of the previous slides as well. The same thing applies to the code vector block. The code vector block, call it, yeah. This code vector block is just the one of the blocks that we have here. All it takes is that we change anywhere we need to use a convolutional block to Sedanian based convolutional block. And in the decoder block as well, there is something that is very unique that we have to actually discuss, which is the fact that it's just the normal way of getting the decoder a block in in standard a unit structure. However, we use for the, for the, for the concatenation part of the decoder block, we use Sedanian concatenation, which I also mentioned in the one of the basics, in the basic slide for the Sedanian. Because this thing is essential that we ensure that they actually inline, so that when we are trying to concatenate any input from the encoder side to the decoder side, we don't mess up the network. So this is actually why this, the concatenation has to be in Sedanian representation as well. And this network is actually, our network has disclosed, yeah, exactly trained on the machine running on two G force twenty eighty T I. And based on this kind of limitation that we have in terms of this, we are unable to really test most of anticipated, anticipated networks in terms of variation of the, of the, of the version of the network. And with this model that is trained, where we have a single model trained on the data from the three cities. We are able to come up with a test M S C of one point three explanation minus three. And as a conclusion and future work, this decision is just to present our Sedanian convolution that is being used in a unit based model. And likewise, as I described in last slide, our model was able to, we are able to achieve a M S score of one point three E minus three in the test set using just a ten book. The model is quite parameter efficient, even though, even irrespective of the big model that we have, we are able to have just very little parameters, which gives them that if we have resources that can actually accommodate more of this, we can actually expand the model, which is a very good thing in terms of parameter efficiency. And what as a kind of future work, we intend to do more experimentation on the network. Which include using time of the day as an input, because we are experimenting with the data, like why doing some kind of analysis on data? We noticed that there are some variation in the network, which is actually time based. So which, but this cannot be experimented based on the time. However, we hope to do this thing more in the future to see how this thing plays on the the results. Likewise, Sedanian network being something that is quite unique in this way. We hope to test this kind of network on other kind of a computer efficient task. And as a final future work, we intend to do some more critical analysis to reflect issues in multitask and learning, because when we have a Sedanian network, we believe that the that the outputs having several components can be used to tackle several kind of tasks. And this has been done by, in literature, by the, by the by literature, in one of the literature that talks about how octonion network, where this kind of multitask learning was actually discussed in details, using hyper complex numbers, which is octonion. So we believe that we, Sedanian network can also play the same thing because of being an hyper complex network as well. And having more components might also give us more kind of room for multitasking when compared to octonion that has its components. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate your time and we, I am, so questions are welcome as well.
Thank you very much, Alavi. Very different approach and very interesting presentation. We already have questions on the, on the chat. Fanyu is asking, what is the advantage to transform the input like that? And he was wondering whether such a transformation could be learned by the network itself. So I guess the question is, what is the benefit of doing the transform? And what is the benefit of doing it expressly? Have you considered this?
Yes, I get that. Thank you very much for that, Fanyu. As a response for that, the reason for this is that in in hyper complex numbers and even for this particular task exactly, we have a twelve different timeframe to work with. This timeframe, we believe them to be unique on their own. And when they are unique on their own, it is something that we can actually present into a network that is interpretable, interpretable enough to deal with them uniquely. So which is the reason why we decided to work with this kind of a complex and a complex number representation.
Okay, thank you very much. Fanyu was also asking if he understood correctly that this transformation is a linear transformation with fixed weights?
Again, please.
Fanyu was wondering whether he understood correctly that this is a transformation, is a linear transformation with fixed weights? Whether the weights are fixed?
Actually, the words are actually linked, just that the matrix of how the words are presented is what is being discussed in the multiplication matrix. The words are being linked along the line with the training. They are not fixed with.
Thank you. David Yonietz is asking whether you trained a single model with only six hundred thousand parameters on all three cities? And wondered whether you saw any performance differences across the three cities?
Actually, during our analysis, we trained some of the models on different cities. Like I just like to test one the model along the line. However, based on our, based on our understanding of this as a Sedanian, to actually make it interpretable enough. So we decided to train a single model on all the cities together.
Okay. And the performance on the three cities was comparable, or were some cities worse or better than others from the three?
Obviously, in terms of training with different city, the, the performance on some of the cities are quite different based on how there's the cities are.
Thank you. Michael Kopp is saying, thank you very much for a nice talk. And he, he's wondering, similar to the questions by others in the audience before, what difference you observed comparing your Sedanian convolution with the normal convolution? He couldn't quite hear acoustically on his line, what you said was the main advantage of working with hyper reals?
Yes, in terms of a difference, one of the difference that we actually look forward to is the efficiency of the network. Like, how can we train a network that is so big like that with very small parameters? We are hoping for parameter efficiency. And this thing can be achieved well in a hyper complex representation. However, this thing can also be accomplished by using something like group composition. But the challenge with group composition is the lack of interrelationship of the groups itself, which is not the case when it, when it comes to a complex representation. Because each of those components are actually intertwined together while getting the outputs. So what, even I want to compare them with a weak kind of a network, when we try to train this thing with a weak network with our kind of arrangements, we are able to see that using this kind of network even at my form using the network in our case.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the audience? So, so I will press suit on the same question, not because your answers are not sufficient, but just because it's really interesting to hear your experience on this. I don't think anyone else in the group has worked with these models directly. So I was wondering, when you compare your model with six hundred thousand parameters with the corresponding normal convolution model with the same number of parameters. Is it correct that you're saying you're seeing better performance with the Sedanian group?
Actually, what reminds me by saying that is that when we use normal convolution in this network, we don't have six, six hundred thousand parameters, we have parameters above two millions, because we don't change anything in the network, all we change is a convolution convolution type that we have in the network. We don't, because training this kind of thing with a weak network with this very small parameter is going to be quite insufficient, insufficient. Because of the number of activation that we are going to be getting per layer, or we are going to, for us to get that kind of small parameters will be quite minute for the network that we want to train. And we want to ensure that we don't have a bottleneck in our model. In the sense that for every kind of output over each of the layer or the block should be something that does not become so small in terms of number of activation. So to do this, we have to stick to the network network while changing only the, the kind of a convolution. So the number of parameters is higher, is more than this, because it's more than two million. But still, we couldn't get something that is smashing this kind of let's say, this kind of a performance in the network, while training this network. So which is why we stick to it, and we believe that one of the reason for this is the interpretability of network in the sense that the timeframes are unique on their own. And trying to put them together as a network is like we are putting them together like when we have an R G B over of our image. So it's more or less like when we see them as a video, we expect the frames to be unique on their own. So we want to that train these things, so we decide to make them different, each frame to be a component. So when a frame is a component, then we can actually try to track the, the effect of the frame as a component, not just that we just mix everything together. So it might be like, are we, it might be easier for a network in our view to be able to work with something that's more clear than something that you have to spend time in, try to align them in your own view. So which is why we try to like work with something that is more like unique in terms of representation.
Thank you so much, Alavi.
Would you mind if I?
Okay, yeah, you can jump in actually with voice and video if you like. Oh, okay, yeah, you you can jump in actually with voice and video if you like.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I shall I shall do that. So thank you very much. I really like this idea. I have to, I have to confess, but I just so that I don't get this wrong. So you could see, and and I like this, so you could see that you are generating sixteen by sixteen matrices out of sixteen numbers. And actually, they form even in algebra, right?
Yes.
It's so you could think of it as a representation and mathematically of that Sedanian algebra of those sixteen parameters. And if you multiply them together, you get a law as how the sixteen parameters move basically. So that's very nice. So you're actually imposing some symmetry on the network. And here, my intuition fails me. Do you do you know what symmetry you're kind of implicitly assuming?
Yeah, actually, uh, if I understand your question correctly, and in terms of my answer, my answer will be that when we are not naturally imposing that uh it is purely symmetric in the sense that the output, if you had to look back at the slide, the output when it's come to the uh the matrix itself, for every output in terms of the uh column of the output, it the role of the output. It the way the uh inputs are being uh mixed together are not the same. If I want to get the first components, it might be like I'm only going to be doing some kind of subtraction. But this is not the case of the second components. So this thing is quite a mix up in some way. So we are imposing on the network to learn how to relate some other kind of a data. So this kind of thing is can be best described in terms of a more the multi modal learning. If we have different modalities in different kind of uh components, we may be able to see how a modality affect the other modality. Because uh this network is going to pick fix a component on its own. And this is a component. How will I get the output? I'm going to work on this component and I'm going to consider the effect of other component on it. Why getting my output? It's not that I'm going to just mix them together or it's not I'm going to now use a network for one modality, a network for another modality and try to do some kind of a early fusion of late fusion. So these things are being done uh systematically in the Sedanion multiplication. The fusion is done on its own. We don't need to do this kind of a thing again. You don't need to be the one to design the uh fusion network. So this thing is going to be automatically incorporated on the school, which is why we see, which is the one of the reason behind working with this Sedanion because we have the timeframe, they are unique in their own sense. The time for for this time and the next time period are actually different. So we see them as this as like a modality and we see them as a different kind of a component that can work with Sedanion. And we pick Sedanion because of the number of components compared number of available input area.
Thank you very much, Anavi. So that that's very clear. I'll food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time as well.
Oh, with pleasure. It's great to have you. Thank you again for your talk and I thank you also for the questions from the audience. And so we will now move to our um last regular speaker of the uh special session. See. Ah, yeah, you are excellent. Yes, would you like to share your screen, Keith? Oh, it's great to have you here. He's master did artificial intelligence at the University of Amsterdam. He's interested in uh continual learning, concepts and abstraction in reinforcement learning and the challenges of applying machine learning to real world data such as urban traffic. We very much look forward to his analysis exploring uncertainty estimates for traffic forecasting. Um, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this is my presentation, an uncertainty intervals for graph based spatial temporal traffic prediction. Uh, and this is work together with Peter Bloom, who was my thesis supervisor at the University of Amsterdam. So first, I'm gonna talk about insert the intervals and why they're why they're even helpful. Um, then I'm gonna show the common approach and the the limitations that this this approach has. Uh, then I'm gonna talk about my uh solution to that quantum regression, um, the neural network architecture that we we use. Uh, the data sets on which we tested, uh, and then I'm gonna show you some of the the very nice results that we have. Um, yeah, and then I'm gonna conclude and and give some ideas uh what to do in the future. So why insert the intervals? Um, if you look at the the graph here on the on the right, um, you can see that um the values is better, sorry. Um, the 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 values that are measured, uh, they're actually in a in a in a very big range. Uh, so just predicting the mean is doesn't say a lot, uh, especially towards the end here. Uh, so if you would have a an uncertainty interval. See. It would more more or less like this. Uh, and you would see that at some point, uh, it is very uncertain, uh, if the traffic is going faster or slower. These are the traffic speeds, by the way. And this is uh certainly more informative than the the mean prediction. Some applications, uh, especially safety or time critical applications, they they require this to to be present. Uh, so one of the main approaches uh to solving this problem is uh to use dropout as a base and approximation. This is a technique uh where you apply dropout before every layer in your neural network. Um, and you sample uh doing inference with dropout enabled. Um, and by doing so, you create a certain uh perturbation. And by summing over all of these uh inference samples, you're able to uh create an average uh inserted the uh prediction. Um, and this the other shirt that this approximates to a probabilistic Gaussian uh the process. Now, if you do this for traffic prediction, uh, you can you can see here on the left what what happens if you do this for traffic predictions. Uh, this is on the LA dataset. Um, there are a number of limitations. The first limitation is that this cannot be used uh in conjunction with a batch norm, which is a penalty to the model because we've seen that batch norm is is very helpful and uh, yeah, does does work very well for for deep learning models. A second um downside of this approach is that a number of uh inference samples are needed to estimate the variance. Now, this doesn't appear to be a problem. However, uh, it is not certain how many samples you need to properly uh to properly have an idea what is the the variance. Uh, so this could be a very, very large number and uh it's not very not very useful in practice that you don't know how many samples you need in order to make a good estimate. Um, but the third limitation is the the biggest for traffic prediction. And that is that the uncertainty that is being produced here is uh multivariate Gaussian. And for traffic prediction, if you predict, for instance, the traffic speeds and the speeds are very low, then it's very unlikely that the speech will go suddenly very low, very much lower. But it's very likely that it will go up. So you need an an asymmetric uh certainty estimate and and this is not a very good fit. So he went with a different technique here, which is called quantum aggression. And with this technique, instead of uh predicting uh the mean and also in uncertainty, the the least stress regression setting, um, we actually divide the cumulative distribution function into a number of quantals. Um, and then uh the variant actually does proposed by Dapni and colleagues uh computes predictions uh why given uh conditioned on the quantile uh tau. And let's see. So how this works is that uh instead of optimizing for the the means great error or the absolute error, uh, a very interesting insight is that um, so the absolute error actually optimizes for the median. Um, and a very interesting insight is that if you would take the the absolute error and you would tilt it slightly, uh, it is actually a very helpful predictor of the the quantals themselves. Uh, and this is something that that Kunkar found in uh two thousand and one, but based on other works, of course. Uh, and that is the basis of the model that we we use here. So of course, you cannot just use the the quantum aggression. You need to have it conditionally um on the neural network. Uh, and similar to how we do that with least square regression, um, you instead of uh doing it like this, so so you solve for the mean uh and you substitute the mean by parametric function, which in this case usually is a neural network function. This is how all of the the deep learning uh autoaggressive deep learning works in a sense. Um, and we can do a similar thing uh for quantum regression. Uh, so that looks like this. And you see that instead of taking the square here, we uh multiply, well, we put it through this quantile function uh row dependent on the quantile tau. We adopted the graph wave net architecture, which is being used in in traffic prediction uh on graphs and which performs very well. Um, by default, this has the mean absolute error and we changed that to be a quantum loss. And also, uh, we condition the input on the quantile tau, which is uh something that you can see here next to the input layer. Um, we see that this is very, this technique of uh this this model is very robust to hyperparameter variations. And also the optimization process is is very stable. So that's very encouraging. Um, and also another thing that we do with our training loss, uh, instead of just using the quantum loss proposed by by Kunkar, we use the a variant of the Hebrew quantum loss, uh, just to be very specific. Um, in order to make it more smooth uh and to make um, yeah, the 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 classic deep learning optimization algorithms work a bit better because uh it's a smooth function. So I think it's also good to slide like to explain a bit more what what is graph wave net. Um, because this is a spatial temporal graph based approach and it is very different from uh some of the other um, some of the other people from the competition. Um, the graph rate net approach uh uses a T C N. It's a temporal causal uh network uh to do the temporal aggregation. And for every layer that they do a temporal aggregation, they also do spatial convolutions uh using a spatial G C N. Um, this is not exactly the same as a a graph convolutional network because uh they use the diffusion convolution operator instead of the regular uh graph conf of a later operator. Uh, but this is more of a a technicality. For now, it's not that uh you you can read the paper if you want to know more about that. Uh, the data sets that we used are the LA dataset. Um, this is very common traffic dataset for well, you know, in a graph setting uh that has measurements of uh Los Angeles for the period of six months. Uh, and from the traffic forecast competition, we used Istanbul and Berlin. And of course, we did some preprocessing on them. So what we did is um, we are not able to to see the full im- to process the the full image because we have a graph based approach. So we we just went with uh sample a number of uh pixels that they are, they have recent like a number of uh pixels that are quite frequently uh reporting values. Uh, however, as you can also see in the previous slide, uh, is that availability, um, this, so how frequent uh the pixels report measurements is much much lower than for for instance, the the LA dataset. Uh, so this might be considered very, very challenging for for this algorithm. Um, yeah, but nevertheless, this this seemed to to work pretty well. Uh, and also another thing that we do, and it's also important to address, uh, since our results are not only the the mean predictions, but also the uncertainty. Um, the test set wasn't so useful to us also because we didn't predict all of the the pixels, but only a very small subset. Uh, we actually went with uh dividing the train set into a new train validation and test set. Uh, and we trained and tested using that method. Uh, so that is a bit different from the the competition as well. Uh, our scores might be slightly different as well. Uh, but one thing I one thing I I do want to note is that when we trained in only ten percent of this training set, uh, the performance on the test set was still uh quite similar. So then the the shift in the data distribution is is not that detrimental. So first, we compare the the mean estimate results. Uh, these are actually the results that the the main traffic forecast competition looks at. Um, these results, uh, well, since we only use a small part of the the pixel space uh of the competition, we cannot directly compare with the other, um, yeah, with the other approaches, unfortunately. Uh, but what we did do is to take the original graph wave net and see how far uh we deviate from that. And also how the dropout Monte Carlo mean uh deviates from our approach. And one thing that we find is that our mean estimate is not as performant as um graph wave net or the dropout graph wave net. Um, but this is not necessarily a very big problem. Uh, because our main contribution is actually the uncertainty estimates that we can produce. Um, just to give you, and and this also brings us to the results. Um, so on the LA dataset, um, I put some dotted lines here to to give you an intuition how far ahead uh these predictions are of the ninety five percent confidence interval. Um, and you can see here that there is uh, well empirically, the the uncertainty prediction seems pretty good. Um, and even on the the second uh, the second prediction, for instance, you see that uh, the model misses the the dip, um, but the uncertainty before that drops already. So there is some sort of sense that uh there might come, uh, yeah, the this this uh big dip. Now, when we do the same thing on uh the Berlin dataset, which it has discretized traffic speeds, so it's it's a bit more uh difficult to interpret here. Um, but we do see some other results. For instance, we do see uh that the uncertainties, they are quite quite okay. Uh, they fit a little bit. I mean empirically, it seems that they they fit a little bit less uh to the data than the previous dataset. But there might be, yeah, there might be some reasons for that. Um, for instance, being uh that uh the GPS coordinates could be slightly off. Um, so there are people also mentioning this could be one of the reasons, uh, at least for Berlin. And another reason could be, um, yeah, the the amount of missing measurements uh definitely has some impact on the performance of of this algorithm and the learning ability. Um, yeah, so this is the Berlin dataset. This is uh fifteen minutes ahead prediction with a a ninety percent confidence interval. And the Istanbul dataset finally. So here actually uh also plotted the the uncertainty predictions of the the bias uncertainty next to it to to have some idea of of what might be the difference here. Um, and you can clearly see that uh the bias uncertainty is has much more peaks, uh, but it's not necessarily better. Uh, it's actually, it seems much more inaccurate. Uh, but this is just from an empirical standpoint. Um, and it's very easy to to argue that if you if you develop this algorithm, of course. Um, so that's why more investigation is needed. But something that you can see is that um our algorithm is definitely able to be very uh skewed uh to model very skewed densities. Uh, and this is very encouraging because this is definitely needed for traffic prediction and and this is definitely um eliminating one of the the assumptions that the the previous model makes. Uh, and therefore, this is definitely a step in the right direction. Um, so these models, uh, yeah, one one thing we noticed with with training these models that is that the the calibration after training is uh is quite heavy tilt, uh, as you can see here. Uh, but the validation set and the test set, they are they are quite equal in terms of calibration. And uh, we think what might be going on here is that um, there are a lot of so uh in the bottom right, we plotted the the uh the number of values that are lower than a certain amount. Um, so also in the C D F, this will uh, this will start with a lot of values, but then end up with only uh, yeah, minor fraction of the values. And I think this is a reason here uh that there is this this good um calibration because the in the LA data the, in the L A data set, there's, there's not so much of a, of a difference here. But nevertheless, we can still calibrate the data set. And if you calibrated, okay, this is on the L A data set, but if you, similar to Berlin and Istanbul, it's still possible to calibrate the data set and then you still get this same plot during, during test time. So our type of calibration is different from the calibration that was used for the bias uncertainty, since we changed the tau values instead of increasing or decreasing the variance. This has the major advantage that you can only, but by changing the tau values, everything that you predict is uncertain or not, is still within the distribution of the values. Well, in the first case, this wasn't, this wasn't, this wasn't true. And here you can see that if you shift the distribution to be a perfect, well, at least according to the observations, to be, well calibrated distribution, the effects that it has. And one of the effects could also be, for instance, the bottom here seems to be very close to zero. And this is because the bottom tail apparently doesn't, doesn't learn enough information in this case. So to conclude, yeah, we are able to model skewed asymmetric uncertainty intervals, something that wasn't really possible before in traffic prediction, at least to my best knowledge. And the uncertainty is computed very efficiently as well. We do see that the mean prediction accuracy is slightly worse than when computing using the mean squared, mean squared error. But you should also take into account that our model is able to predict so much more because you also given the tau value. So it should be able to predict, yeah, for the mean, but also for the other, yeah, for the other tau values. And therefore, it, it makes sense that the model is much more complicated and yeah, it might just be that the extra complication makes it much, much harder. Yeah. So that brings me also to the limitations and the future directions. To me, this algorithm seems really, really promising. But there are still some, some problems and downsides. For instance, if you train only a number of iterations, you notice that there are some crossing quantiles, which it shouldn't be possible that, for instance, a 10 percentile or the 90 percentile overlapping. But sometimes we see this happening during training. This is also during training. Luckily, we don't see it a lot after training, but it does happen when there are almost no measurements. For instance, in the second case, this is an example where the mean is lower than the 10th percentile, which is definitely not correct. Yeah, so, so how to deal properly with these missing values is still a bit of an open question and we're not, not sure how to do this yet. And the third thing is that the calibration after training is a step that we do right now. I don't think this is, I'm pretty sure we can, we can do much better here. I've seen, and well, I've also cited some, some works that they, they apply a better type of calibration. And I'm pretty sure that if you apply a better type of calibration, maybe even during training, that this algorithm would be much more powerful and be much more accurate as well, maybe even beat the mean predictions. Yeah, so thank you. That was my talk. And thank you for hosting me as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Keith. If there are questions from the audience, please write them in the Zoom chat. I wanted to say I really appreciated your contribution to the competition, thinking, thinking outside the regular framework and looking at the predictions of the different models. It turns out that even though they use similar input, there are some models that cope with outliers quite well and others not so well. And it would be very interesting to see if you could extend your model to be more fine grained, to see how you're, you're doing for those. See, when there's a day where there's a hard skill strike, whether you would be able to, as you suggest, you know, see this just before the strike or so. Yeah, so it's very, very interesting. There, there was a question by Henry Martin. Two questions, actually. The first question is, is your approach immune to quantiles crossing one another?
Yeah.
That's a nice and quick one. And the second is also a yes, no question, actually. Do you fit the separate model per quantile?
So this model is able to, given the, given the quantile together with the input, it is able to predict the uncertainty for a specific quantile. So how this works, if you would say, I give the quantile 0.5, which is the median, then you would cut back the median, similar to how the normal graph wave net or other algorithms would compute the median. But then if you would go to 0.6, 0.8, you would be able to construct an uncertainty interval using these bounds. That's how it works.
Thank you for the clarification. Are there any other questions from the audience? Then thank you so much again, Keith. I hope you can further explore this work within and outside traffic forecast. And I would love to, to see this extended.
Yeah, thank you for having me and also for being able to participate, actually outside of the guidelines of the competition.
Oh, the guidelines to allow this. It's just that not a lot of people jump on this. Anyway, thank you so much for joining us. And this brings us to the, to the close of the regular contributor talks in the special session. So we're moving therefore to the, to the last talk. Mikey, would you like to share your screen?
Yes, I would indeed. Let me try and do that. Here we go.
Wonderful. It is my great pleasure to welcome Michael Kopp, co-founder of the Institute of Advanced Research in Artificial Intelligence in Vienna. Mikey originally read mathematics at Trinity in Cambridge, moved to Bordeaux as an independent research fellow, working to combine hitherto disparate research areas in his field. He's added again, of course, bringing together machine learning, frame prediction and traffic research in this competition. He will wrap up, looking back and looking forward. Michael, the Zoom is yours.
Thank you very much, David. So I know it's been a long and very, very, very interesting day. So I shall try and make my presentation short and painless, I promise you. And then I would really love to hear from all of you, I think. So what I will do is I give a summary. And then in the outlook, I'll outline maybe very, very high level, some key challenges that I can see in this area, which I think would be amazing to, to be able to tackle. And actually, probably we have the tools to tackle. The selection is my own. So if you forgive me, some of them also go into the more esoteric and I'm not even sure I can completely formulate them, but I will give you a flavor and hopefully some of you will find that interesting. And last but not least, I will kind of outline a little bit what our next steps are and how we are going about this interesting area. So I think I cannot start a summary without actually noting that the competition really is made by its, well, by the question that's asked and of course by its participants. And as it was last year, I am bowled over honestly by the creativity, quality and value of these solutions. So thank you very much indeed to all of you for making this happen. And as we, as I think Moritz Neuen this morning indicated, there is a lot of work going into all aspects of this competition. There's an entire team here on the call, which you will maybe not necessarily here, but who've really worked extraordinarily hard to get this done. But for me, when I see these, these, this outcome, it's amazingly worth it. I would like to show you a few highlights that I think are completely non-trivial. We didn't know where possible, although we suspected before we started that competition. And I think actually even quash some folklore in this field of traffic research. So the first one, and Henry, I can hear the cries. It seems that static local data that we provided was a flit lab. Now, we will quantify that and maybe we're still wrong in that. And by the way, that doesn't mean that there isn't a way of making this work or making this valuable. And I think as someone pointed out, there might be the possibility that in transfer learning, it might actually be of immense help. So we'll maybe still flock this horse. And I think someone asked early on whether we would continue providing this. I'd like to hear from you. But it seems, and I think someone earlier in the coffee break was also making that observation that maybe that data isn't really of help in predicting. I think one myth that the traffic literature used to have and maybe should now correct is that there was always this belief that, you know, kind of if you have short term prediction, that's 15 minutes. And after that, it becomes extraordinarily hard. And that was usually in inverted commas, proofed by the fact that the models at the time didn't show that. So in this competition, so last year, we, as you may have noticed, we had 15 minutes in the future, three frames essentially. And we did that. And even there, we had the suspicion that why would you need to stop at 15? The technology certainly would make a difference. And I think all of you have now proven that with your results, that actually it's interesting that you can predict much further in the future. So an hour out is definitely something that the literature, current literature wouldn't support. And then last but not least, also now bonus challenge, and that's maybe something we will also continue to flock, is that the results really indicate that gridded processes can be related to each other. I think Sepp Hoherer gave a great introduction this morning by saying, maybe, you know, weather actually affects traffic. So people change their mode of traffic when it's raining, maybe take the car more run than the bike and so on. And obviously, so there's a, we know that there's a causal relationship this way or maybe the other way around. Pollution is caused by traffic or partially caused by traffic. And seeing the satellite images and relating to processes is actually something that I find is extremely interesting. So you can also think of, can you predict how two wheeler traffic motorcycles that can, at traffic lights weave through and so on, but still are somehow correlated and related to four wheelers? Can you actually read that out as well through data alone? I think questions like this are very interesting and we should, we should, and I'm very glad we've made a first step. And I think something we should continue doing. I'll give you my very biased highlight of key big challenges that I think would be amazing to solve. And I think the biggest of all is transfer learning. So the slide is suitably sparse, partially, because if I make it any less sparse, then I already define the problem and maybe reduce it. So obviously, if you have one city and I let you observe the traffic, I mean, the highest kind of challenge would be, I only give you, I don't know, the road plan of the city or the gridding of the city and say, and maybe the roadmap would be, would be best and say, can you now fit in, please, what the traffic looks like? Now, of course, if you think of traffic in a sort of physical way, so that it's like pipes and there are things moving through at certain speeds. And yes, there's some variance, but there's kind of maybe some laws which, which are there. And yes, traffic appears and disappears. So people come out from garages and go back into garages and so on and so forth. But if you somehow could determine a pattern and can transfer it, why people travel from one city to the next, that would, that would allow you to do that. Of course, here you would be solving or a solution that I now outlined is massively general. The fact that you would know why people move and how many people move would allow you to really start tackling questions like if we build a new road, what would the traffic look like and so on? I mean, there's, there would be no end if one can actually do it in this generality. Or it would allow us to build a simulator for traffic on which reinforcement learning could then really hypercharge these kind of thoughts like modern city planning, smart city planning and so on. Of course, one could make it a little bit less ambitious by saying, okay, I give you movies, as we have done in this competition of City One, and I give you a bit of a movie, just a short, short clip of City Two. And could you please complete that? And the other question is, are there, you know, in a sense, are there kind of general transferable laws, how traffic moves, or if you observe it enough, that can go from one city to the next? And I wrote that at the bottom, you know, there, there are these, in many other situations, there are these, these efforts that one tries through learning networks, training networks in different way to separate the idiosyncrasy from actually, you know, general rules that, that would apply. And of course, if you could do that, that would also be very helpful. You could then, hopefully, this idiosyncratic network or sequence of networks or adversarial combination of networks or whatever it would be, this idiosyncratic piece could be represented cheaply and could be calculated for each city. And then maybe you could transfer things. So all of these variants and then many others one can think of extremely, would be extremely good for all of us to actually maybe plan cities or smart cities or even traffic much better in the future through data. And that's maybe something that I think we should all strive for. So that's definitely one of my key challenges. I was very excited when someone said there's a transfer learning approach. So I'll definitely look at it. Another challenge, which I think I was really talking about already last year and someone actually picked up is, what's a good loss function? I think she in your, in your talk, you, you did that. I like that a lot because what we obviously did in this competition is we took those sequences of attentions that you submitted, 500 of those, we just compared them one by one, took the M S E and then took the average of all of this. Now, that is a metric, it's a distance function. It has flaws and I tried to kind of give an example of one of these flaws. So these two circles with these things sticking out, think of it as a ring roads around big cities. So let's say around London, the M 25, right? And let's say I now predict a traffic jam on the left hand side, sort of between the first and the second road that goes out or road that leaves the M 25. And in the next one, I just predicted a little bit further down. So is that a bad result? It could be, right? It could be extremely bad. It depends on what you want to predict. If it's ETAs, then you came from the second thing and went into the opposite direction, went out of the first exit, then in the left hand side, you would predict, yeah, traffic is free. And on the right hand side, you would say you're, you're going to hit a traffic jam. So it does make a difference if you use that. But the question really, in my mind, would be if we observe traffic now for a little bit, it could be that there are actually two or three reasonable outcomes that might occur. And it's very hard and probabilistically hard to say which one. But there are other options or other types of outcomes that are very unlikely. So that kind of also leads one to think, maybe you should have a generative model. So you should have some form of looking at the right and left, well, it kind of looks correct. Or in this generative model, you should have, we, we train on lots of these movies and what happens next. And somehow you have a discriminator, if you, if you do a gun. And this discriminator will tell you whether it looks reasonable or not. I think the fresh inception distance, or I think in cheese talk, I think you quoted a paper from 2016, which did something with V G G. So you go to certain layers and you say, I take from certain layers the difference between the target and what I've observed. And I make a distance out of that. And that gives me something, I think the fresh inception distance is something that's similar. You take as inception would say inception three, I believe you cut it off at the third pooling layer. And there's some very good reasons why one should do that. And you take the distance between points that comes out. So that I would interpret as it looks kind of the right way. Given that I'm assuming if we use the inception network, it's a, it's a network trained on images. And so it kind of maybe has this connotation. I very much liked the idea of using actually the unit you train and have these enforced between the kind of horizontal connections that they should be very similar, which I believe is what this, if I understood this correctly. this correctly, what she had in, in his talk, the, the, the loss functions. Yeah, I'm still not quite sure what it means intuitively, but I'll, I'll get there. But these are kind of questions I find very interesting. So you know, I believe that if we had the general, a generative approach, especially if we wanted to also think of building simulators for traffic to do reinforcement learning and so on. I think you would want kind of different outcomes that could occur, you would want them represented. And if a model gives you a potentially feasible outcome, but doesn't exactly do what you just observed, but what you could observe with high probability, I think that's something that should, should be good. And I still don't know what do we have a good, good loss function. So any ideas in that direction would be of extreme interest to me. At least, then I, I indicated that already, so derived quantities or derived processes or connections between derived processes. So you could think of our traffic movies and if I give you ETA matrices, you know, between any two points or any two cells. You would sort of think that the dynamic of one would influence the other and, and the other way around. So that's something of interest. A similar problem is pollution and, and also not quite similar, but in the same vein, you have the side challenge that we had, you have weather movements and weather dynamics. And the pollution, I think I mentioned earlier, you could have, let's say probes from four wheelers. And you get a similar movie for two wheelers and then maybe you have less data in one category and maybe you can fill in the gaps in the others, having seen how this correlation works between, between these modes. And I think Moritz is, has also mentioned this morning that you might want to do this with much different sources, so pedestrians and so on. But I think that's extremely, extremely interesting, or I find very interesting. And lastly, but not least, it's very interesting to me that the winning architectures also this year, some of the winning architectures were units. And maybe we're all cross inspired, but you can also see this, this network structure doing well in processes or geospatial processes, which one would simple mindedly say are very different like in weather. I think the papers now out and weather prediction, they also use units, they also use a gridded approach. And it's very interesting to see that, that one finds the same structure that is, that is actually coming out as, as a winning solution. And the reason why that is interesting is that after all, whether one could say is a very, I, I mean, physically you'd solve Navier-Stokes on boundary conditions, you could never do in reality in a very complex movement. And there is this perception so that it's, it's, it's kind of chaotic. And there's this perception that traffic is more physical, there are pipes like water. And you have, you know, things appear and disappear, sure. But there's some regularity to this and there's a chance that maybe graph approaches and so on can work. And that's definitely true to a degree. But if you grid this problem, and if you just consider it as a geospatial gridded process with maybe some local connections, it's interesting that the same network architecture should work. And in the end, that goes back to the fact that you are actually not asking what is the underlying physical rule like Navier-Stokes. But that you say in this gridded process and the way I observe it, what are the next steps? So that's one question you could ask or you could ask question. Well, find me rules within those gridded. Those grids that, that, that I can recognize the rules of thumb that I can use. And that might be even in this transfer learning I mentioned earlier. Or lastly, if I give you a grid which has been reached now, can you tell me what I started from? So maybe spool back time, but it's not a one on, one to one mapping. You may have started in different, different places to do that. And these are all incredibly hard questions, but one way you could actually tackle it is to start and, and build a MNIST type dataset, well, benchmark dataset where you have geospatial processes, some come from natural phenomena like our traffic movies. Others can come from synthetic things where you actually know the underlying rules and you just create it. Like the game of life, by the way. And you can now ask yourself, so which networks or you can benchmark different architectures on these different processes and now use that dictionary to maybe start being able to look at new processes and kind of look up this, does this, does this network that actually is good, the traffic is good here too? And so on and so forth. And I think that would be to me a nice thing to have and something we should really work on. And if anyone is interested, I'd, I'd love to, to join forces with you. Oops, that was. And yeah, so one, one thing I didn't even mention in here, and I don't know how to formulate it, but I've touched on it, that's building a reinforcement learning environment or simulator, which actually, you know, simulates also cities if you, or the dynamics of traffic when you change roads and so on. So you could of course go back to agent based models normally. Calibrating those models is very difficult. Maybe you would like to do that in an automated fashion, but here, yeah. These are only rough ideas, but I think if anyone could ever come up with that, that would lead to a new type of reinforcement learning ability you could do in order to plan smart cities. So again, would be very interesting that. And we are certainly looking at that. One concrete step, so less waffly that we're doing right now is traffic forecast plus, which we hope will be in CVPR. I think that's announced today or at some other competition or machine learning conference if not. And there we would look also again at high resolution weather and traffic movies, explore sensor fusion, which I mentioned earlier. Multi-modal weather forecasting, multi-city transfer and maybe doing that in a few short learning way. You'll find out more when it's out. Fantastic. And with all of that, I would like to thank you very much again.